A good start.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Mark Stevenson. I'm the chairman of the Resource and Services Overview and Scrutiny Committee for the special committee that we're having tonight. To just want to go around the room. We've got Terry Allen, Pam Morrison, Chris Griffiths, Jim Codling, Mick Barry, Chris Amos, Gary Scott. They all form part of the committee, but we have other councillors in the room. And that will be Paul Clifton, who's actually talking on the Agenda Item Number Five. So, okay, before I start, I need to ask the committee if I can move to the alternative agenda, which has points one, two, and three in them, because our agenda that was sent to us in the pack only has agenda items number four and five. Everybody happy for me to do that? I need to get your consent to do that. Okay. Apologies. Number one, apologies for absences and substitutions.
Chair, Councilor Ex skills.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda number two, declarations of interest. Counselor.
Should declare an interest. I'm the chairman of the council at Frinton and Walton. And Frinton Walton have two beach huts today rent out to residents of the town council area only. Thank you.
Well, Barry.
Yeah, similar, similar interest. I'm the Mayor of Brighton Sea and Brighton Sea has a number of beach huts on the town council owns a number of beach huts on the seafront.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number three, questions on notice pursuant to council procedure, Rule 38.
Chairman, their honour.
Thank you very much. So, the agenda item number four, which is what I guess most of the audience is here for, is the task and finish group for the scrutiny of the council proposed to review the beach hut strategy. And before we start that, just want to pass over to the Democratic officer, so he can explain a little bit about what task and finish groups do, the process and where it ends.
Okay, just as councillor Stevenson has said, before the meeting gets into looking at two task and finish group reports, just wanted to use the opportunity of saying as part of the proceedings today that the council, Tendering District Council, operates executive arrangements, which means there are a group of councillors with the leader that make the majority of decisions affecting the work and the services and the functions of the council. And that means that the remaining parts of the council are not executive decision makers. So there are then the group that deal with things like planning and licensing matters. But the group that is before you this evening is the overview and scrutiny committee is effectively not a decision maker. It is there to oversee and to scrutinise the work primarily of the executive. So this committee, when it makes any decisions, will be decisions to recommend actions or to invite the cabinet as the executive arm of the council to make that particular decision. So it cannot actually make definitive decisions here in relation to those services and functions. In undertaking its scrutiny and overview role, it can obviously do some work at committee, and it's doing that work in committee this evening. But it has set up task and finish groups to undertake specific inquiries into specific matters. This evening, it is receiving two reports from two of those task and finish groups. One is the task and finish group undertaking the review of the arrangements for the beach hut strategy of the council. And that is going forward to for decision, or scheduled for a decision by the cabinet on the 17th of February. So any recommendations from the task and finish group will be considered this evening and then potentially put forward as recommendations to cabinet on the 17th of February. And the other one is on cybersecurity, and we'll come on to that when we've concluded the beach hut strategy. So I hope that helps just frame the discussion this evening.
Thank you. Is that better? Okay, do that. There is a bit of an acoustics problem in here, but hey. Okay, so let's move on to agenda item number four. Councillor Scott, welcome and welcome, Mike Karen, your supporting officer. If you'd like to give us an opening into what your task and finish group has been up to, and then we shall talk about your recommendations.
Thank you, Chairman, and committee members. As you know, myself, councillor Gary Scott, councillor Bill Davidson, councillor Miles, councillor James Codlin, and councillor Junior Placy were the members of the task and finish group for the beach huts. We had six, one, two, three, six meetings on the 21st September, 29th September, 6th October, 28th of October, 15th of December, and the 24th of January. Meetings were attended, some with officers, and also we had people from beach hut associations, from Frinton, Walton, and Brighton Sea. We took questions from the members of public who had had beach huts or have beach huts in the beach associations, and they gave us some ideas, what concerns they have, asking questions. We would ask questions back to clarify certain things in terms of leases, about how many about beach hut leases, and how many beach huts they own and all sorts. So it was really, really good exercise. And we actually went on a site visit, Mr Karen here, myself, councillor Placy, councillor Delph Miles, and councillor Codlin. We went to Walton and Frinton to look at the beach huts, and looked at the range of designs, styles, adaptations. And we had a really good look, and it was a good exercise with Mr Karen. And Mr Karen explained more in depth about the cliffs and adaptations, and certain beach huts and styles and so on. And it was really, really good. And councillors actually felt that we can go back to the committee and ask questions of the officer for clarification. It was a really good exercise for us, and I'm very, very pleased to be part of that exercise. Task and finish group, Chairman, if you may, I don't mind reading these recommendations out.
I've got no problem, but I think we'll do them one at a time, and then people can come in as and when they feel they need to speak on it. Unless anybody wants to speak on the report first. Does anybody want to speak on the report? Councillor Barry?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Scott for the report. It's just, it's a general observation about the report that it lacks, it lacks detail, it lacks figures, it talks in vague terms about fair fairness and reasonableness and so on. I just wondered what, what access you had to any proposals for increases in fees for the leases, increases in, you know, fees for having the valuations done and so on. Was that part of your, was that part of your inquiry? And just as an adjunct to that, I did email Mike Karen and yourself earlier today and ask about the, the consultation that closed on the 8th of January, and where that is in, in this process at the moment. Obviously, you didn't see that, you haven't seen those results, but can perhaps Mike Karen answer the question as to where that is now positioned in terms of considering this overall strategy? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barry. Before I go on to Mr Karen, I understand Mr Kieran Charles and Mr Mike Karen were in attendance at one of our meetings, and they explained more about the consultation exercise and the questions. And I understand there was quite a large number back. I do appreciate that this was online. And also, I've seen some of the questions, and I felt that in my view, the consultation didn't go further enough, in my view. But however, Mr Mike Karen, they might be able to elaborate a bit more about the consultation and the numbers.
Sorry, Chair, and sorry councillor Scott, you didn't, you didn't answer my question about the figures that were made available to you when making your recommendations.
Talking about the consultation figures.
No, I'm talking about the actual proposed increases in fees and the increases in evaluation charges and so on. Because your recommendations are quite clear. I mean, we can go through, sorry, we can go through them one by one, but overall, there is no detail in them. And a lot of, I know a lot of my residents are concerned about the potential increases.
Thank you, councillor Barry. I don't recall at the task and finish group, we talked about fees. I don't think the council has the fees at present or what they're going to be. Mr Mike Karen might be able to tell you a bit more.
Thanks councillor Barry. First of all, in relation to the, to the consultation. So the scope of the task and finish groups work was to look at the draft strategy and the questions in the consultation, respond back to them. So the consultation work will feed into the information provided to cabinet. So cabinet can review the draft strategy with the context of the consultation. And that will include this work as well, I have to say, I should say that as well. So the consultation feeds into the cabinet reports. And as you rightly say, that finished on the 8th of January. So that that work will, will do that. In relation to the, any proposed fees, as set out in the draft strategy and the report cabinet in November, the cabinet have been asked to review the proposal to move from licenses to leases, not a draft terms of any lease and fees and charges. So there are no fees and charges available. What actually says in the report is that they'll be undertaken by an independent valuation based on the market at that time. So there are no fees and charges available, and that wasn't available to the task and finish group. So the information in the reports and the draft strategy is what they've been, and the consultation and questions is what they've been focusing their work on.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're gonna have a look at, sorry, councillor Griffiths didn't see your hand up.
Mr Chairman, can we just clarify whether or not?
Yeah, sure.
Can we just clarify whether or not the new recommendations apply to new beach huts? Or whether or not it's all beach huts, or existing beach huts, or a mixture of the two? Because I'm not too sure from reading this, whether we're looking at whether the strategy is aimed at sort of new sort of beach huts going into specific locations, existing beach huts that are already there that are going to be hit by these, the new strategy, or whether it's a mixture of both? Because when we're looking, for example, at beach hut adaptations, I'm not too sure what they are, are we saying that that will, for example, affect existing huts or only new ones?
Thank you councillor Griffiths. I would have to refer to the officer on this, but there were mixed opinion and mixed views at the task and finish group on this. And Mr Karen will come tell you the answer.
Thanks councillor Griffiths. So at the end of the report, you will see that what the task and finish group did is they went through the individual questions in the, in the consultation, and made a comment against each of them. And they've then been collated into the recommendations. So the, the points raised in, in the report are relating to existing beach huts, not anything proposed in the future. There is one question in the consultation about the proposal to develop new beach hut. So there is some things covered in there. But in terms of those points about adaptations, that's talking about existing beach huts and then future beach huts then besides.
Councillor Allen.
Yeah. Yes, it's a real shame that no figures are, because most of the people have been in touch with me. Their main concern is whether they're going to have to pay a lot more. And there's a fee for a licence, then a fee for the rent. My main concern is purely for our local residents, and I hope that they're not going to be penalised at the, you know, to make sure it's across the field. Because I think that our local taxpaying residents should, should pay the same as people that come from outside the area and have got beach huts. They pay tax all the year, for all the year round, not just for the pleasure of being on the beaches. And but what you're saying, we won't hear nothing about the fees for quite a while now, of what the final figures will be. Or would that be on the 17th of February?
Thank you councillor Allen. Obviously, I refer to the officer, but some of councillors at the task and finish group did ask questions of this. But obviously, what the officer said to you now is exactly what he said to us at the task and finish group. So, Mr Karen.
Thanks councillor Allen. So the, as I mentioned before, they won't be included in the report to cabinet. What cabinet have been asked to do is make a decision on the proposal to move to leases. Not, there's no detail about the, the heads of terms for the lease, or the, or the price of what that lease will be. What it says in the reports, in the report in November, is that they will be established by a market rental, by an independent valuation.
Anyone else? Councillor Griffiths.
In regard to I, I understand that beach huts designs should be permitted that are contrary to current legislation. But how on earth can you, do you know what emerging legislation is? Because if you look at the whole raft of different stuff that's coming out of local government, you know, you could start off with a design which fits all the criteria. And then by the time you actually go to build it, you could find that something else is coming out of Whitehall, which means it's not, doesn't comply with emerging legislation. I mean, that is incredibly woolly. I mean, I understand that you want current legislation, but stuff that's actually in the pipeline and could take two years, doesn't that create all sorts of difficulties when you're trying to design something?
Thank you councillor Griffiths. Adaptations and designs, there was mixed opinions from the speakers that attended the task and finish groups, people from Brighton Sea, Walton, Frinton, and the renters. There was quite different discussions on adaptations and designs and so on. So the, so the committee actually took on board some comments and suggested ideas and things. But Mr Karen be able to say a bit more on that.
I think this was a point, obviously, by the task and finish group raised, and what that particular recommendation was in relation to was the potential for anything offensive to be put onto beach hut. So that was the context of the conversation that they didn't, that wanted cabinet to consider, or to ensure that, you know, no offensive designs or the likes of were included on beach hut. So that was what that recommendation was in relation to.
I understand that. But I think my problem is, how can you actually design something for legislation that's in the pipeline and hasn't arrived yet? Because let's be honest, how local government works, or our national government works, it goes through numerous select committees, numerous debates, can actually be altered before it gets, it's signed off at the end. So in my view, that I think if we're going to be, if we're going to start using this as a strategy, we've got to use current legislation. We can't use something that's actually going through the processes in, in Westminster, because it could change by the time it goes through the readings in the Commons and the Lords and gets here. And there's, you know, lots of different stages in government legislation, which means as it goes forward, it's altered. So surely, we have to work on current legislation, not on legislation that may be turning up in 18 months' time.
Councillor Griffiths, when we went on the site visit to Frinton and Walton, a couple of councillors, myself admired the, the designs and the styles and these beach huts. And we were, we were very impressed with the, with the colours and designs. I think the, I think the council were thinking of having pastel shade colours. And, and some councillors didn't like the idea of giving the freedom of people to, if they want stripes or spots or, or designs on the beach huts. That's what councillors have put forward in the recommendations. But in terms of emerging legislation, that's where Mr Karen will have to talk about, about that.
That, that particular point was a recommendation from the task and finish groups. It's not something that's included in the strategy. That point was a recommendation from the task and finish group.
Honestly, that needs to come out, doesn't it? I mean, I do, I mean, I think if we're being realistic on this, I mean, you know, I accept that people might, there may be issues with, with what colour you want to paint your, your beach hut. But I think we have to be a little bit realistic, and we can only really base it on what's actual legislation, not what we think may be going through, or our interpretation of what we think may be going through, or what some government minister at the moment thinks it should be going through. And in my view, if we're being realistic on this, and we're giving people a fighting chance, we can only really base it on legislation we can only really base it on legislation that's in play at the time. Because I don't think that, you know, looking at a local government and how it works, trying to second guess what might be here in 18 months' time, I don't think is viable, practical or possible.
Councillor Allen.
And I'm pretty sure this is meant to be that in the rules now, it states what type of beach huts they should be. And it's also a palette of colours, a large palette of pastel shades that have been there for about 15 years. I think you need something in there to make sure someone doesn't come along with some political thing or what can happen and they start doing it all over a beach hut. You need some that you can say, no, that's not allowed or shouldn't be done. So I don't know, emerging legislation, perhaps the two words can be changed to be slightly softer. You know.
Councillor Scott.
Yeah, councillor Allen is hitting the nail on the head. We were discussing this last week and there were a few councillors who were concerned that some beach huts may have political or offensive wording or symbols and so on and so forth. And but we don't want us to restrict people having painting unicorns and rainbows and stripes. Because they are, if you go from Frinton and Walton, there are beach huts that have spots and they have stripes and, you know, and it makes it a bit fun. And actually councillors that came and went on to the, took a walk from Frinton to Walton back, admired the imaginative designs on the beach hut. So we did talk about this in length and there's a couple of councillors agreed with that. And some councillors didn't have a preference.
Councillor Allen.
Is it a pick and mix now or will we get to go through the recommendations?
I think we can go through the recommendations one by one so that we can just flesh out what we.
Chairman, I was going to go read out the recommendations for the benefit of the public and then councillors then can ask questions of myself and Mr Carron, is that okay?
No, actually the way I was going to do it and the recommendations are in the report, we're going to do them one at a time. You know, we have a little discussion around each recommendation. You're more than welcome to read out that recommendation as it comes around and then we'll move on to each one as, so if there's any other single or anything to be done, then we can do that there. Okay. One quick question I have got to ask is the whole section being brought up a few times on the beach hut, in the beach hut strategy about the design and everything else. And I was just wondering what your thoughts were about the infrastructure and everything else that was in that section? Because you don't seem to have put it on here. Sorry, let me put it together. So there's a whole section of the draft strategy that's got an improved infrastructure supporting the beach huts and the bits around it. I was wondering what your thoughts were on that whole section because it doesn't seem to be reflected here. And obviously it's been pulled up by a couple of people tonight. I think I'll ask for your thoughts. Go on please, Gary.
Some, we went up and down and some beach huts have got adaptations, some are bigger than some. The concerns from the people that attended the task and finish groups from Frinton and Walton, some are concerned of the big adaptations, some don't have adaptations, some have like stairs and ramps and things. And I don't have a problem at the moment of what's happening. I think people are doing what's right for their beach hut. Because people want to use the beach hut and if they can't access the beach hut properly or some beach huts don't have adaptations, especially in Walton. I did ask the officer what will happen in the coming months. Once the strategy has been approved by Cabinet, what happens if people want to put adaptations on and people pass adaptations? The officer might be able to say a bit more about that. In terms of designs, I mean, I think the officers were hoping that it was going to be basic pastel coloured designs. But after seeing some of the beach huts with clearly not pastel designs, there are rainbows and unicorns and several designs, I think it'd be disappointing that we ask people to remove those designs because those people want to have a cheery, nice beach hut. And if we're going to have a beach hut where it's plain Jane, pastel colours, I think people may not want that.
Thank you councillor Scott. I see a couple of people have raised their hands in the audience. Unfortunately, I can't take questions from the audience. So councillor Allen.
I think it's not so much, chairman, to do with the people painting spots and the star arrays on there and stuff like that. It's the adaptions on there. And actually L explains that and it gives them a time period to stop it. Because it is becoming like people are building on stuff, on, you know, adapting their beach huts with side sort of verandas, side balconies, steps up and down, coming out the back. And it's getting a bit over the top, which then encroach on the other peoples next to them. And I think that's it. I know that now that when, if people want to sell a beach hut, they have to actually take photographs to the, bring the councillor to the council to make sure there's nothing on there, otherwise it will not be processed until they're taken. But I think we've got to remember you pay a licence or a fee now for that. Was it eight foot by 12 foot square and nothing else? And that's what, when people start actually building structures around them. I think L covers that, if they've got them now, then they've got two years, a recommendation of two years to remove them, which I feel perhaps is a bit long. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Allen. Okay, let's move into these recommendations. I think skip A because that's just a title. It's not actually one of your recommendations, it was just a bit that we copied and pasted, but an A next to it. So if you want to start with B councillor Scott.
Yes, chairman. B, the committee recommends that future charges for lease agreements are set at a fair and reasonable level. This is relevant for both commercial and mainstream leases. This should also be appropriate for any new beach huts made available for purchase or lease in the future.
I'm going to start us off with five. Why did we need to do leases? Can you explain that to me? I didn't see that in the report anywhere. We refer to leases as if they're a done thing. I'm just curious as to why the existing status quo isn't good enough and we need to bring in leases.
I refer to the officer, but I will come back to a couple of councillors were concerned about leases and some, a few councillors are concerned about people owning more than one, two beach huts.
Sorry, you mentioned councillors were concerned about leases. Can you elaborate on those concerns?
No, they people, some councillors didn't want to make it too high because if people want to have a beach hut, it makes it not affordable. They want to like, you know, make it affordable for many, many people to have beach huts or take on a lease as councillors wanted to make it as fair as possible. And I agree with that and the officer will come back further.
Thanks councillor Stevenson. I'll just refer to the report in November. So what we were consulting on was a move from licences to leases, as you referred to. And the generation around that is around the increased security of tenure which would be provided to beach hut users. Currently, the licence agreement results will, can result in changes being made to that licence within 28 days. A lease would provide that for more significant security of tenure as a result of that. The other point that kind of came up in the pre-consultation, so just referring back to prior to the report going to Cabinet in November, was people being probably spending significant sums of money on beach huts and not really understanding the terms of the agreement that was going to be undertaken with the council. So people spending upwards of £60,000 in some cases, that's not across the board by the way, but in some cases, are not really understanding what they were purchasing. Actually, they were purchasing the beach hut itself and a licence agreement with the council, which potentially, potentially could be changed within 28 days. So that was one consideration around that. And the other one was about factoring in the specification which councillors have been discussing, the design specification and actually factoring that into the agreement through a lease. So that would be, once that is, as you've probably seen in the consultation, that the proposal that was consulted on was to revise the specification following adoption by Cabinet. And once that specification had been agreed in consultation with beach hut associations and the stakeholders, then that would be factored into that lease agreement as well to make it more robust. So they were the key factors that were outlined in the report.
Thank you, I've got a follow up one for either, just let me, and then I'll bring you into it, thank you. Just wanted to, is this a new thing that councils are doing? Or is this something that's been going on with other councils for quite some time? Or are we leading the charge on this?
We're by no means leading the charge on this at all. So we're probably slightly behind the curve on this one. So predominantly, I think from the examples that we've seen, leases tends to be the agreement that is used. I haven't got any wide statistics about that, but we are slightly probably behind the curve on this one.
Miss Hastings.
The current. Is that better? Oh, yes. I surprised myself then. So, yeah. Okay, yeah. So the lease arrangement for beach huts has been used nationally for many, many years. It does provide more security for the beach hut owners. The current arrangement is that the licence fee is paid annually and can be terminated on quite short notice. Also as well, beach huts go, as Mr Carron has said, for quite a huge sum of money. And the council would not be looking at any type of recuperation of the value of a beach hut. The purpose is, is actually to ensure that the person who owns the beach hut has more for what they're paying essentially. The, just aside issue, yeah, I've been in local government for a very long time and one of my first jobs was doing beach hut leases at Southend Borough Council. And, you know, we used them very, very effectively. And the beach hut owners welcomed them at the time because of the, as we keep saying, the security that they gave them. If currently, if a beach hut is sold, a licence is personal, it's not transferable. But with a lease, you can assign a lease, you can assign a lease to a new owner so that there is something to purchase. At the moment, there is nothing to purchase in regard to the land that the site is sitting on.
Thank you for that clarity. Councillor Allen.
Yeah, the term is both commercial and mainstream. Can I ask the officer, how many, do we have commercial leases for these? Or is there something you want to do? Because my understanding is that these are all for just people to have them, not commercially.
I'll let Gary answer that if he wants to pass it on to the officer, that's up to him.
Yeah, I'd like to refer to the officer. I think it might be a new up and coming system, but Mr Carron will tell you more.
Thanks councillor Allen. Yes, you're correct, that they would be a new introduction following adoption by Cabinet. So there is no commercial agreement at the moment. But following adoption by Cabinet, there'll be an introduction of commercial agreements which can be applied for by anybody who wishing to rent out their beach hut.
We could end up with a company owning all the beach huts somewhere because they have the funds to buy up beach huts. And that, and that local people then left, you know, with their notice pushed up against the window because they can't get in. And so I think we should be very cautious about commercial leases in the first place, but also about how many one company, if you do. Here we are. Because you, I mean, the beach huts really, we should look after the local residents who move to the seaside, one of those things that they come to the seaside for. And to say if they're all taken up by massive companies end up, you know, if you start once, it gets bigger and bigger. So that's what I would be sort of concerned that, how far is this is going to go?
Okay, so I'm guessing the question to the task and finish group was, did you consider the options around commercial leases and the impacts of possibly losing all beach huts to commercial enterprises?
We did discuss this. There was concern from councillors because some councillors know of people that own four or five beach huts and there was concern whether we can take them away and so on. But the officer can explain more about that.
Thank you. So just two points on that. Number one, you'll see in the consultation, one of the proposals being considered at the moment is to only allow one agreement per household. So that's something going forward, which will alleviate against that situation. So that's within view to that issue and try to ensure that particularly more local people have the speech huts going forward into the future. So that's one of the things to, in order to do that. And the other point that you will see that there'll be an application process for commercial licences. It won't be a tender process, but those people wishing to apply for a commercial licence will have to meet a certain criteria, you know, to try to alleviate against situations like that occurring. So they're open. So the opportunities for local people to have a beach hut will be hopefully raised and not decreased.
Well, I'd like to see how this is going to be done because I would say the long friend and probably most of them are owned by people that don't live in the area at the moment. They're over there, just people buy them up because, you know, they've got the where for all, all the funds to do that. And I fear commercially, just very carefully, as long as it doesn't affect our local people. Because it's.
Talking about if someone who's a family member that owns a beach hut and they decide to pass on to a family member, would they be able to keep the beach or transfer ownership? And I understand that, no, they would have to apply again for a new lease. And I'm sure the officer will tell you more about that. But we were concerned about that in the group, that if a family member, say, passes away and left it to a family member who then takes on the next of kin or someone who takes on all the same process, have to go over again? Or will it be transferred within the family? That was discussed with myself and other councillors. But the officer might be able to tell you a bit more about that.
Yeah, so, yeah, as I said before, the proposal is to limit the number of agreements to one per household going forward. If somebody has got more than one agreement now, then that would, that would be. If somebody has got more than one agreement now, then that would, that would be, I think, considered unfair not to. But going forward, the proposal is to limit to one per household to try to stop those things happening. I take your point when I said local people, there can't really be a restriction from the councillor such about somebody from outside the area outside the district, purchasing one. But the limit to the numbers of beach huts that any one individual can have an agreement on will be limited to one per household to try to support that.
Would this be a cabinet decision, the final one, when you do it? Or will it be a cabinet decision?
It's always a cabinet decision. Can, Brian? Okay. Miss Hastings.
Can I just say, in relation to, obviously, my role is also here to support all members in meetings. You know, you can consider, you know, making recommendations about levels of decision making if there are things you are concerned about. Because with regards to either cabinet or portfolio holder decisions, they would be subject to calling. So you would have another level of scrutiny at the relevant time, once the fees and charges were being set or the market rents. So something to bear in mind if you want to consider that.
Thank you, Miss Hastings. Going to come back to this commercial lease, which I share same concerns as councillor Allen, but possibly not for the same reasons. Just want to get an understanding of how it works, really. So in your consultation, number one, renting a beach hut and what the council is considering, you talk about ten per day and then a commercial clause. And then later on, you talk about only giving people one. If somebody has, honoring multiples, if somebody passes away, for instance, or leaves the area and decides they don't want them, has five huts, do they now able to sell those huts as five? Or will they have to sell them individually, a separate, so that it sticks to the one per household rule? And secondly, if we're talking about commercial agreements, I'm assuming because they only allowed one beach hut, then that commercial agreement will only apply to one beach hut?
Sorry, Chair, I didn't quite understand the second part of the question, but do you want me to answer the first part first?
First one, I'll say the second one again.
So in terms of the limitation to one agreement per household, that won't be applied retrospectively. So if somebody has already got four beach huts now, then they will be honoured, those agreements will be honoured. So we're talking about going forward now, so people won't be in a position to be able to purchase more than one.
Maybe I should clarify that. I understood that bit. But once that person no longer owns those five beach huts, for instance, you know, we've honoured, they've had it. What happens? Do we break them up into individuals or are they sold as a five?
Well, they will be the individual property, inverted commas, of that person who's selling them. So they will be in a position to sell them, but we won't be in a position, following if this proposal is adopted by cabinet, to issue multiple agreements to one household going forward.
Basically, what you're saying is, when they came to sell them, they wouldn't be able to sell them to one household. They would have to sell them to five individuals on the assumption that those houses haven't gone in. Okay, so the second part of the equation, the question was around the commercial lease. So we're talking about a commercial lease for one beach hut because of the way that just out those rules, there's only ever going to be commercial lease for one beach hut. It's not going to be commercial lease for two or three or four because we're only giving one to each household. Is that right?
In principle, going forward, yes. But I think if, as I say, we're not going to apply the one per household proposition to retrospectively. So in principle, somebody who does have more than one beach hut now, in principle, they could apply for more than one commercial agreement.
My apologies, I did mean, yeah, that retrospective, we would honour what's already in place. But going forward, you'd only have to be able to get a commercial licence for one, for anything new. Pam, sorry, councillor Morrison, I've got councillor Barry first and then you.
Thank you. There's a lot of information seems to be emerging that perhaps we should have expected in the report. But in terms of the leases, will there be a requirement for people to, or will there be a requirement for the Land Registry to be involved in any way, shape or form? And in terms of our recommendations, can we look at putting some safeguards in for local people, as councillor Allen has been indicating, there are some issues in his area. But overall, I mean, we've got three thousand odd beach huts in Tendrinh. And I'm not sure that the scale of commercial usage is that vast. And it seems as though we're trying to impose a strategy on people where there isn't a problem in some respects to try and cover a whole area and trying to sort of uniform, come up with some uniformity of approach to solve a problem that seems to be localised in some areas. And certainly that's the feeling in my district. But just on the recommendation itself, B, which I think is where we're still at, is that the committee recommends that future charges for lease agreements are at a fair and reasonable level. Now, coming back to this, and I mentioned the three thousand beach huts, because if there is to be some increase, and in the draft report, I note on two or three paragraphs that the, it should be noted that the annual cost of a lease will be higher than that of a licence fee to reflect the greater security of tenure and market values. There's a further, depending on the outcome of a review of the beach hut specification, the council may consider a new set of fees and charges for any adaptations which are deemed appropriate. And then the move, you know, the move from licence to licences, licences to leases will result in an increase. And the fee for issuing new beach hut agreement will be reviewed on an annual basis. So I know at the moment, you know, it's two hundred and forty pounds for a resident in Brighton Sea and four hundred and eighty for a non-resident. But if you've got three thousand and you put it up a hundred pounds, two hundred pounds, three hundred pounds, you're talking six hundred thousand or a million pounds. And I suppose if that does come about, what people might say, how do you set a fair and reasonable level, which is the recommendation from the council? And is this a simple revenue exercise? And if, you know, what can residents expect back in return? If they are going to be paying double what they're paying now, well, I mean, you haven't been able to give me any figures. But I suspect it's going to be of some magnitude. What are people going to be getting for that? So there's two or three questions there. Just, is there going to be any Land Registry involvement? Can we have some safeguards for local people in terms of ownership? And in terms of revenue, what is going to be spent to justify increased revenues? As it says in the draft report.
Councillor Scott, do you want to? Or actually councillor Hastings, councillor Hastings, you're not that lucky.
Mrs Hastings is going to answer the Land Registry question.
Thank you.
From memory, leases with a term of over seven years are registrable at the Land Registry. So for a term under seven years would not require anything to be registered at the Land Registry.
What term are we looking at then?
I would imagine it would be under seven years.
Well, that's not much security, is it? I mean, if you're saying people are going to be paying money, but, you know, at the moment, it's twenty eight days or whatever it is. And I'm not aware of anybody being turfed out of their beach hut at short notice. So it's not something that the council would be actually doing. But if you're going to go to the pains of giving people leases, then perhaps shouldn't it be for, I mean, my thought is it should be for a longer period. And if that involves more bureaucracy, and then when you leave your beach hut to somebody, you've got probate and all that. I mean, it does seem to be over complicating beach hut ownership.
First of all, I think my comment would be that, you know, as a committee, you're in, that's what you're doing, you're feeding comments into the Cabinet strategy, which they are looking at. So, you know, if you feel that the term should be looked at, whether it's below seven years, so you don't have to register leases at the Land Registry or over because you think it gives more security. That's obviously within your role and remit to feed that in. That's the first thing I'd say. And the other thing I'd say is, in practice, it's actually quite distressing at times when you are working with a family that feels that they can leave something through probate under the current licence arrangement, and they can't because they have nothing to transfer.
Councillor Morrison. No problem. Councillor Allen.
Chairman, I just want to say that what Mrs Hastings just said about transfer and probate, so that was discussed at the Tassen Finch Group. We asked the question of what happens if someone inherited a beach hut. So that was discussed. And the officer, Mr McCarron, didn't know exactly the answer, but that may be something coming forward in the future, maybe for Cabinet or whoever. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Scott. Councillor Allen.
I mean, it's, once you start going into Land Registry, you've got two, solicitors' fee plus the Land Registry fee onto your costs. And I'm sure solicitors watching this programme tonight will be rubbing their hands of potential three thousand customers. And almost as much clear as the amount of lawyers in the government get, rubbing their hands together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Allen. Okay, we haven't got very far. So I'm going to move us on. So just so I'm clear, are we happy with recommendation B as it's written? Or does anybody want to change it? Add anything? Take anything away? Silence, I'll take it as we're happy to leave as it is. Moving on to C then. Do you want me to read these out?
That's all. Chairman, is C, is recommended that terms and conditions included in the lease agreements are fair and equitable for beach hut owners.
Think that's a no brainer, but councillor Griffiths, you've got a question.
Could we have something added here that the terms and conditions including lease agreements are fair and equitable and done in consultation with beach hut associations? Because I do think that the people that actually are leasing, that he should have some input in the terms and conditions, because it could be a bunch of people sitting on the committee like this, like me, don't have a beach hut and aren't really that clear on some of the minutia. And I do think that having an input from a beach hut association in consultation could be quite helpful for the process.
Anybody else want a second, that counts, or Scott?
Chairman, yes, again, this was mentioned at the Tassen Finch Group, and we felt it's appropriate that agreement of councillors, that we make sure that residents who, or people that own beach huts, leases and renting and so on, should, you know, be informed of the terms and conditions way advanced. So that's, I think, one of the councillors suggested that we need to be fair and equitable for beach hut owners. That's why we've put that in.
Okay. I mean, one of the problems, I'll say, I agree with councillor Barry, it's lacking in detail. So all these conversations you've had with councillors, nothing about transferred on to this document. So it's a bit difficult and we're asking questions again. Councillor Griffiths.
There's a difference between being informed and in consultation. Inform says, I'm going to put your rent up by X, where in consultation, you ask. I mean, surely if we're looking to be in outer terms, fair and equitable, it would make sense to approach the beach hut association and ask for some of their representatives to have some input in the process before we agree it, surely. I mean, bearing in mind on government consultations, you're only actually having to ask them, you don't actually have to take any notice of it. But, you know, asking them might be a good idea.
If I may refer to Mr Karen, he might be able to elaborate more on the consultation and informing people of the associations.
Sorry, before he does, I just want to check with councillor Griffiths that the recommendation now reads, it is recommended that terms and conditions including lease agreements are fair and equitable and in consultation with beach hut owners. Okay?
That would be unacceptable.
Beach huts. Okay, I don't think you need to answer then, councillor. Sorry. So I swear in the years, isn't it really? So happy with C. So you proposed, anybody want a second it for me? So I'll just, thank you. And then everybody happy with the recommendation? Yeah, good. All right, on to D then.
Chairman, the committee recommends that appropriate resources are put in place for administrative administration involved implementing the strategy. They asked for considerable consideration to be given to subsequent costs to the council of proceedings leases. A couple of councillors, chairman, were asking, with all this extra admin work for coming forward, a couple of councillors asked what are the costs, how are you going to get to resource this and implement the strategy and bits and pieces of this? And Mr Karen might give you an answer to that, but we were concerned about the resources side.
Councillor Griffiths.
On the end of that, could we add, and that the costs be reported back to this committee? So that what it would read is, they asked for consideration to be given to the subsequent cost to the council for processing leases and that the costs be reported back to the committee. In that way, we still could retain some form of ownership over the process.
Okay, anybody else want a second that? Okay, Mick, sorry, what was? Oh, okay. Councillor Barry.
I mean, wouldn't that just come under the general scrutiny of budgets anyway that we carry out?
We can ensure it's a budget line in the bud when we do the scrutiny.
One of the advantages of doing that is that we know what's actually gone in there and it's not hidden in the recharges. Because as we know from finding this stuff in the past, it's not always that easy to find.
Mr Karen.
Thank you, Chair. And one of the points in the strategy or the draft strategy that was considered by Cabinet in November, and one of the things we were consulting on was, firstly, expressly says in the report that the strategy itself does not commit the council to any additional financing, I should say that. So one of the points that was being considered for consultation was to bring a further piece of work back. So if there are additional resources required within the service, a further report will be brought back to Cabinet. So that was one of the things that was being consulted on. So this particular strategy expressly says it doesn't commit the council to any further finance. So any further finance that does happen will be a separate report in its own right, which I guess in principle could be considered by this committee as well. And ultimately, that would be considered and approved in a so by Cabinet.
I've written in there that we'll welcome that.
Given that the report and the strategy will probably come in the new administration, would it not be a good idea for everyone sitting here in six months' time sees that this was part of our work and sees what costings are involved? Because things could change after a month.
We can certainly add it to the piece of work we do before the end of this term, which I think we've got to do soon. Okay, so all I've done is that we'll welcome that report when it comes. I've amended the recommendation, just put it in as a welcome, okay? And that'll keep it in the minutes. Other than that, no. And that'll keep it in the minutes. Um, other than that, no amendments to, to D. No, okay. I'm going to go to E.
Chairman, um, item, uh, E. The committee recommends that bright colours and vibrant designs be included in the revised design specification for beach huts when this is produced for adaptation, uh, adoption. Um, as I said previously, councillors had a site visit from between Walton and Frinton and, uh, there wasn't, they weren't plain Jane, pastel colours. There were some very good designs and vibrant, um, colours like rainbow stripes, stars. Um, and, and we were quite impressed with those. And, um, and I think if beach hut owners or leases had the freedom to make them vibrant and nice and colourful, um, I can't see a problem with that myself and nor did the councillors on the, on the Tassan Finis Group. I don't know where Mr. Karen might have an opinion on this.
Everybody happy with that one? Councillor Allen.
You know, um, it's going to be a cost, the, the cost of doing it because surely they would have to submit some, you know, take a photo on the phone and send it in, say, is this appropriate? Or a design, as I say, because we could get back to the other one that we skipped right over, is it I? That they can put it all up there. Then you've got all the problems of getting it removed, which is harder once it's up there. So surely there'd be any, this is what we intend doing. If you've got any problem with this, even if it's just a bullseye or something, you know, uh, it's, um, then you won't get into problems with I.
Okay, I think I'm going to take this one to you, Mike. Could you give us the process for how a resident would choose the colour for their and how the council would respond to it? Thank you.
So there is a current design specification which we ask, um, beach hut licence holders to adhere to. What this process is suggesting is that it's kind of recognising the fact that that design specification is, is, is a little out of date, needs reviewing, um, and suggests that a, a new design, um, specification is, is, um, is put together in consultation with beach hut associations. It does say that expressly in the, in the reports. Um, and then, um, but it does actually also say that, um, in, in the, in the draft strategy at the moment about it's minded to, um, you know, move towards brighter colours and recognises the fact that that variety actually improves the aesthetics of the seafront and is a positive, not, not a negative.
Thank you. So just so I'm clear, are we increasing the range of our palette? Or do residents tell you what colour they're thinking about painting it and you give the nod or say no? I mean, if somebody wanted to put a luminous green one on there, you know, that.
The, the, the proposal is, um, uh, to improve the, or sorry, increase the, the palette available to, to beach hut licence holders. But it would be through a, um, improved and revised beach hut design specification, which would be done following adoption of this strategy.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions on that? Councillor Morrison.
Well, we've got some fabulous designs in Dover Court, as you, as you know, and I think bright and vibrant is lovely. Um, I do not think we'd like to treat people as adults and when they come to choose their colours for their, for the beach huts. Um, I think the most important thing is that they're well maintained as much as anything else. And as I say, there are some brilliant designs and I think a few years ago we won a, a national, we're on a television programme where the lady actually won because she did a fabulous design. So, as I say, great, any designs you want, obviously not offensive, but other than that, you know, I think we can treat people as adults, choose their designs. Thank you.
But, uh, coming back from Councillor Morrison, that, that was, that was the opinion of, of, of the, the councillors. We, we said, you know, um, give people to choose whether, what they want to do, long as it's not offensive and bad taste, but make it, uh, bright and vibrant. And, and there's a lot of beach huts that we visited between, particularly between Frinton and Walton. We didn't go to Dover Court and we, and, uh, we did go to Brighton Sea, but, uh, we did see some really nice beach huts and designs and so on. So, yeah. I might want to say something on that.
Or I can just go to Councillor Barry. Councillor Barry.
Um, yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm just wondering what, um, the scale of the problem in respect of, uh, colours and designs is or what, you know, because in reading the draft report, I, um, I think there was mention of some that look like garden sheds or something, that they're just, you know, brown and silver, weatherproofed. Um, I mean, there's over 300 beach huts at Brighton Sea and I think they're all fairly unique, individual, all very colourful. Um, and I, I don't see this as a problem that needs perhaps people being dictated to. That people do actually choose, you know, colours in accordance with their landscape. And as you point out in the next, um, recommendation, that the differences in seafront locations are important and that there are, there are local flavours, local preferences. And, uh, I just wondered why you felt it necessary to make this recommendation and what the scale of the problem was that you discussed.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Councillor Barry. While we were discussing, um, this, um, um, offices and obviously on site were talking about, um, you know, pastel colours and, and, and some, some councillors felt, well, you give people the, the, the ability to, to paint vibrant ones, whether it's luminous green, stripes, pinks, you know, it's, I just didn't, I didn't agree and other councillors didn't agree that to just have a pastel shade colour in it. And, and clearly when we all went on the site visit, there was beach huts that clearly were not pastel colours. There were bright stripes, rainbows. And, and, and we felt there is appropriate, you know, we felt it was really, really good and well thought out. And we just wanted to put it in, in, in our recommendations that, so it's not in the strategy, so it's not just pastel colours. We want to make it vibrant and we want to put it down to make it vibrant, give people the freedom to choose what colours they want to. Instead of having a, a guide, because what we don't want is to be bland and and not colourful.
I'm going to move us on. Okay, um, so everybody's happy with E and we'll move on to F.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, the committee recommends that there is acknowledgement of the differences in seafront locations along the Tendrind District and their respective unique features such as cliffs, slopes and how they impact beach hut design for emerging specification review. So, um, we, again, we, we looked in particular at Walton, uh, we, we went up the slopes and we went along the rows and rows of beach huts. And, uh, there were some beach huts with adaptations. Some we had extensions on extensions on extensions, um, and some that didn't have any adaptations. And, um, and councillors were, um, well, I was quite impressed personally with the, the, the workmanship and, and the way the, the adaptations are currently there. And, uh, I, I feel, um, and other councillors that I can't see a problem, but, um, but we obviously, we need to put it down in the recommendations and the officer will come back with more information.
Okay, um, anybody got anything on that one or happy to nod that one through? No, Councillor Allen.
Uh, it's, um, I know our young councillor keeps on and he thought it was brilliant and lovely, but not everyone does. And, um, and I think the the adoptions and adaptations are beginning to go over the top. And if we're not careful and there's no, um, control on it.
Are you talking about the next item, Terry? Pardon? Are you talking about the next item, G?
Well, no, he mentioned that he see.
Can you say that one for G?
Um.
Because G, G's talking about where you're on it.
Agree with this one, but then, fair enough, Chairman.
Okay, we'll move on to G, Shuri.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, G, noting the above point above, it's recommended that beach hut adaptations in parts of the district were included in a future specification for reasons of access. Example appropriate is access steps on cliff slopes. This should be considered on location by location basis. Um, Chairman, we, we heard from people from Brighton Sea, it was, um, uh, at one of our Tassan Finnish groups where some people were putting patios at the front of their beach huts and some weren't. Um, so there was some concern from beach hut owners there. Um, and there was some concern from, um, people from Frinton and Walton with reference to adaptations. Um, s- some people felt they were too big, some maybe any changes. So there was a mixed opinion on, on that. And, and there wasn't, um, there wasn't, um, overall, um, commitment on one side amongst the councillors. So we, we just, um, put in a note above the recommended, the beach hut adaptations are part of it, excludes, it could be different from, um, location to location. So we know, we appreciate that Dover Court is different to Brighton Sea and Clapton, Holland are different to Frinton and Walton. So but to be fair, we only went to Frinton and Walton and because Mr. Karen said that we only had to go to Frinton and Walton because it is, it was totally, the other areas, um, didn't have many adaptations while Frinton and Walton had more. So there, that's why we had our site visit at Frinton and Walton. Mr. Karen's over there. Mr. Karen's coming.
Thank you, Councillor Scott. Councillor Allen, you wanted to come in then?
Well, as, as again, this is so wide open. It, it says there what they've already got. If you've got a beach hut that's on a slope, you've got a pair of steps going up to it. But it gets to, oh, we don't just want a step, we want a balcony or brand or whatever you call it. A, a big sitting area out the front with the steps going down, then people want to pass after, I think, I'm talking about local to me, have to walk down the slope around the grass to get round to carry on with their, their journey. Um, so if you've got the beach hut, you've got an access into the beach hut. You don't mean an access to a, a lounging area to one side, you know, a thing at the back and with the, they've got doors coming out the back of some of them going down to, to the back areas. I mean, it's all very nice and that, but where does it end? And it becomes a free for all and then it begins, which looks nice with all your pastel colours and all that, ends, end up looking like a shanty town. You know, and, um, perhaps in other areas don't mind that, but I would not like to see it for it. And, um, uh, as I say, and, uh, most of the people I get talking to me mainly about beach huts is why ain't more local people got them? And why is this happening? And it's the, the actual, and also the actual access to beach huts by the council paths or not there.
Councillor Barry.
I just think there's, um, there's a need to define what adaptations they're talking about. Um, because we've heard from Councillor Allen that some have got balconies and stairs. I mean, the only ones that, um, I see in my area are some, so small patios, you know, out the front. Um, and a lot of, the need for a proper specification is for, um, security as safety reasons because we're subject to title search, surges in Brighton Sea. A lot of the beach huts, as you know, were washed away in, um, in, um, March 20, February 20. And that to me would be an important element of any design, uh, you know, specification. There, there should be some sort of security, uh, aspect to it. But also, um, I, I welcome the fact that it says it should be considered on a location by location basis and taking up Councillor Griffiths' view that perhaps we need to insert in consultation with the local associations about that because, uh, you know, Brighton Sea doesn't look like a shanty town and I don't think it ever would, you know, but, um, I, I can see how that might develop in some other areas. So maybe the consultation bit again is important here in the recommendation.
Chairman, um, during the discussions, uh, with, uh, the people from Frinton and Walton comment which group, but they brought in, uh, they brought in a letter that we sent out, um, we, in April of last year. We also, they also, uh, presented adaptation engineering designs of adaptations, like how big, um, how high and against the cliffs. Um, this, I understand that may not go forward in the, in the new, um, strategy. But, but to be fair, the residents either from Frinton or Walton, I can't remember which, came, presented a Tendrind District Council engineer is, engineers layout plan of adaptations, but, uh, that was a few years back, mind. And, and, uh, the residents from the associations wanted to make that clear. So we just, that's why we discuss this and about adaptations and also Mr. Karen might come back on that.
Councillor Allen.
Oh, i- i- if the council's going to agree to this, um, then you've got someone that, as I say, you use the term again, where for all, the, the word shanty town to me came from a resident who showed me what, you know, showed me what was going on down and I went, because I went round with it. And, um, is that if the council is going to allow this to happen at heart, which we don't know what's going to occur, you're going to get the Barry Bucknall stand there, you know, it's, it's banged together with a few nails. Or the, the proper tradesman do it and it'd be all different stuff. If the council were serious about this, they should put sort of, um, walkways, there is a, a term for them walkways by the sea. They've got in Spain, they've got them all around the coast. If you walk all around the coast on them, um, they should be, if you've got slope and then the actual slope down, then I'm not talking about the front of the thing bits. Again, I'm referring to Frinton, sorry. It can happen elsewhere. On the back, we should be building off the, so they can come out the hut, walk across the path that everyone uses and then have a sitting area on the front. Because it seems that's what people want now. They don't just want it to change to go into sea, you know, and, um, it, it wants to be a, a communal get together area, which I agree with. But we've got to have some restriction because otherwise if one of them collapsed, it would still hit us, come back and hit us as a council. So if we're going to do it, we need to do something proper. And then of course the cost will then be put on to those huts that, that serves. But then it'd be all standard and it, and it, everyone would have the same and, um, it'd stop all the arguments.
Mr. Karen.
Thank you, Chair. Just to confirm, Councillor, on what the proposal is suggesting, um, in the, uh, what we were consulting on a draft strategy is that that design specification be reviewed in consultation with beach hut associations. It does explicitly say that. Um, so there is a general principle behind which people can adapt their huts. So, um, and what it also, uh, suggested in the draft strategy was that any adaptations falling outside of that revised design specification, we would work with those owners for, for them to be removed. But first of all, it's important to say that we'd work towards a revised design specification first of all, that's the first process. And anything then of, of those types of adaptations which fall outside of that, we would then work with those, um, uh, beach hut, uh, agreement holders to, to be removed. Um, and, and ju- just one point of clarification, just on the, the, the site visits that we did. Um, Frinton and Walton was chosen because of those specific adaptations. I don't want anybody to think that we never went to Brighton Sea where the beach hut's so wonderful, obviously, and Dover Court and Harries and Clapton and Walton for any, uh, Clapton and Walton for those reasons. It was, it was, it was to look at adaptations and those sizeable adaptations because of the cliff slopes as, as Councillor Scott mentioned.
Okay, um, so reading from what the councillors have said, there's possibly an amendment to that, mate. And that's just the adding of two words really. And that goes along, but noting the point above, it is recommended that certain limited beach hut adaptations in part that were included in a future specification for reasons of access, E G and so on. Is that how everybody wants it to read? Councillor Allen, is that? Is that what you're thinking?
It's, uh, this should be considered on a location by location basis. Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks. We'll move on to H.
Uh, thanks, Chairman. Uh, H, uh, it's recommended that a map was attached, uh, to the emerging strategy, clearly define which land was owned by Tendrind District Council. This was brought up by one of the councillors, uh, whose ward has private land with beach huts on and, um, and the councillor felt that perhaps we may need a map to, uh, clearly highlight the areas which is in, in the TDC ownership and maybe, uh, lands that are not in the ownership for TDC to be highlighted. So people will understand the difference between place to place. And that's, uh, one of the councillors from a coastal ward, uh, was keen on that. So people will understand the difference between place to place. And that's uh one of the councillors from a coastal ward was keen on that.
Everybody happy with that one? Okay, let's move on to I.
Thank you, Chairman. Um. It's recommended that no beach hut designs should be permitted that are contrary to cu- uh current or emerging legislation.
Mister Chairman, can we take out the word out of that emerging?
I'm happy to do that. Everybody else happy with that? Okay.
Take it out, Chairman, because. If someone then wants a beach hut after that, the new legislation, we'd have to go for it. So the the emerging is a bad word to have in there.
No problems, we'll move on. Area J.
Thank you, Chairman. J, to ensure high standards were maintained on beach huts, it's recommended that adequate resources should be in place for appropriate enforcement action. Some councillors felt that um that some beach huts were left um in in a in a um. Bad state and some and and some cancers. The impression we got from um from uh people, uh being mailed us and visiting people, uh visit us, that. There's my uh, it must more emphasis on beach huts that were not being maintained properly. Um, and uh, and uh councillors felt that some enforcement may be needed.
Thank you, councillor Scott. I think we're in agreement with that, councillor. Just a clarification from councillor Barry. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, it was, um, would this be uh enforcement? Under the terms of a lease, the 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 new leases, uh rather than. The current situation because um. This may, this whole strategy may take some time to implement, it may conform to which timetable. Uh, we don't know really, but um are you saying that? People should, you know, be forced to do repairs and then pay for them, you know. Uh, I mean, it's a big, big, it's just a big term enforcement. Could you just clarify that, what you mean by that and whether it's under a lease?
Uh, thank you, councillor Barry. Um. This came about subsequent uh from our site visits and uh people approaching us via email. Um, and uh people attending, uh visiting us, um they just, some beach huts, um. People haven't been going there and some beach huts uh uh need painting and and so and and some need some repair. Um, and um, and it was discussed that amongst councillors that we should perhaps. Uh, maybe contact these people first to say, look, by the way, can you like manage, try and find a way maintaining your beach hut and things? Um, that's what come about, but Mr Karen might give you more information.
I think I am going to come to you for this one, uh, Mr Karen. Um, we're talking about enforcement of the beach huts. Um, and I think if I caught the gist of the question, it was, are we using our current enforcement team or are we going to be putting something new in around the leases? Is that about right?
Thank you, Chair. Um, uh, ju- just first of all, just to say that the proposal and the consultation is for the leases to come into effect from the first of April twenty twenty four. So that that wouldn't be immediate, uh councillor Barry, as you, as you pointed out. Um, in terms of the reference to uh to additional resources to to try to. Um, ensure that the revised specification is is adhered to. Again, the proposal in the strategy is for a um a new um piece of work to come forward to cabinet to say. How that can be costed and how that can be funded and what's going to come forward. So it's important to to repeat what I said before that there's, there's no. Financial commitments in this strategy, so any additional um resources that 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 are required will come forward in a separate proposal to cabinet. So the the strategy itself is not funding a um additional resources at this stage. So if there is any enforcement action in the short term, and I guess the the very short term. That would have to come from additional uh current resources. Anything going forward will be considered on its merits by cabinet when that comes forward.
Happy with that, councillor Barry? Councillor Griffiths and then councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Um, are we putting any monitoring processes in on this? Because it's all very well, but if there's this. No monitoring on this, we don't know whether it's working or not, or whether any enforcement's taking place. And if we're looking at that, there needs to be some recommendation that six months after the appropriate um recommendation comes into place. There's a review by this committee or the equivalent committee where we look at um. What what actually enforcement has taken place, if any, and and how we're resourcing it. Because otherwise, you're going to have a very nice policy with no one there to implement it. And we're not sure whether it's going to be effective or not, or whether or not it's going to be fair or fair or. Whether or not we're actually hitting the targets or what we're doing is not working. So there needs to be something in the process that gives us an indication of whether or not it's successful or not. Who to report to cabinet.
Okay, I'm going to take councillor Allen as well and then I'll come to you. Councillor.
Sorry, I keep hugging this chairman, but I live in an area with hundreds of these things and um I I've had a lot of. Conversations about them. My thing on on J is that you say to ensure the highest standards were maintained on beach huts. And I think that we, because I can't really see enough, I've missed it anywhere in the recommendations about the behaviour of people using them. Because um it was called one, it's that the people were about three beach huts down from. The actual beach hut was causing grief. There's sort of fifteen to twenty people there, massive barbecue turned up. And they were having a great time, but the smoke from this thing was going down and choking everyone down. And um that time, several calls to the beach hut, there were people, never come about. So there should be. Something on the people using them and it and um when we talk about enforce- enforcement. Suffice it to say that the people that weren't the ones that owned, we knew the people that owned the beach hut. And they weren't the ones that were there, it was just rented out. And um it's the behaviour of them and it's disrupting other people that just want to sit there and then enjoy the sunshine. So if we could put and and their use.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Councillor Scott.
Uh, Chairman, um councillor Allen was explaining what he wants to do to get your attention, so councillor Allen, you should repeat what you just said. So the chairman can hear it.
Apparently you've got to repeat what you just said, Terry, because. Some of it, I was talking to the officer about something.
I don't think this one in football, Anton, I hate it, is it? No, it's um, what was on about is that we should be um. High standards of of um behaviour or use of these huts as well. And um and I just relayed a the experience I had. When I was asked to look at something called down there. And um so that should be included and also councillor Griffiths, when he's on about the monitoring. You've got the ideal people because the beach hut owners have patrol, in Frinton, they actually have people walking up and down, because that's still happening now. And they sort of phone in and say a certain number, if they're not a member, tell the council, we're, you're in to told if it's working. But they could sort of put some, perhaps someone should come and have a look at this and see if it's standard. It wouldn't be sort of snitching on anyone, it's just keeping a high standard down there, which helps everyone with their. With their investment or their asset.
Chairman, um following on from councillor um Allen, um. The one of the councillors on the committee uh obviously received a complaint uh with with large crowds at beach huts. Um, as as counts, as one of the councillors said, thirty plus people at the beach hut and parties and barbecues and. And uh and that was that councillor who suggested that there be um sort of behavioural standards or some sort of enforcement at beach huts.
Okay, um, so, sorry, apologies, councillor. And I wasn't quite listening to it because I was actually dealing with councillor Griffiths's recommendation about having a review. In six months and I was talking to the officer about the length of time we thought would be appropriate. Um, I think six months after the start would put us in mid-season and that would be a bad time to be doing a review. And so I think we're going to put a recommendation that this is reviewed in twelve months. So hopefully that covers what you were talking about. Um, as to what Terry, councillor Allen's talking about and councillor Scott uh has intimated. Which again isn't in the report about um the standards people have, I think it's just us supporting the recommendation here, you know. I've got no problems with that, has anybody else got a problem with the recommendation? As it stands.
To ensure the high standards were maintained, were maintained on the convi- on the condition of beach huts and also their use. Which would, as you say, would cover it, or you could put more of this, Lissa could put more. Uh, say proper words in there. And also, perhaps just mention about the monitoring by the beach hut association, who do an excellent job as it is now.
We're thinking that we'd probably cover it if we just put to ensure high standards were maintained on beach huts and their use.
And their use.
Okay. Okay, is everybody happy with that? Yeah, okay. In that case, that's J done. We'll move on to K.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, K, noting above point, any future enforcement action should be proportionate to the agreement holders' personal sentences is. But ensure the design specification standards are maintained.
Councillor Barry.
Uh, I'm I'm just not sure what that adds um in terms of anything. Because if people have got, if enforcement action has been taken as recommended by the previous uh. Recommendation, you can't actually then qualify that and say. It it, it's got to be, we're assuming that our enforcers are proportionate. Do we have to actually spell it out? I just think it's a little bit superfluous.
I think I'm in agreement with you there. I think I'm happy to take that one out. Anybody else want that? Yeah. Everybody else happy to say that one out? Tonight, just, everybody's looking away from me, so I just stick your hands up. Everybody agree with that? Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to L.
Thanks, Chairman. The committee recommends a reasonable timescale for adaptations to be removed, which fall outside of the revised specification is agreed. The timescale recommended is a period of two years. Uh, we spoke at length, councillors on the task and finish group, a timescale, some people saying um we would talk about maybe two seasons. Uh, then um we were talking about a year, um and then uh other councillor, we managed to get to two years. And uh the officer um said two years may be a appropriate time. I don't know where Mr Karen wants to come in any more on that.
I I think it's point, so I was just capturing the views of the of of the committee. I think they were discussing two seasons. My suggestion was that that term was probably a little too loose, uh because you can define a season a certain way. So my suggestion was if they're going to say two seasons, they said two years. So that 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 was just a clarification at that point.
Councillor Griffiths and then councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I I think the whole thing ought to be added to underneath G. Because otherwise, you you've got, on on one hand, we're recommending that beach hut adaptations in part, the district including full specification. On the other hand, we've got a reasonable time cell for adaptations to be removed. So the whole thing's really quite ambiguous depending on which adex- so adaptation is where. So I think if you add that whole and paragraph under G, it all runs together quite well. Because you you could be in a situation where some steps in Frinton are taken away, but they're okay in Brighton C. And I do think that when we're looking at this, um, you know, if we've got them, if we've got I under G or L under G. Um, it all runs together quite well. It's all part of the one um adaptation paragraph and it makes sense. As it is in isolation, you know, it's just a recipe for confusion. I'm quite confused on bits of this anyway.
Councillor Allen.
Hmm, I do think two years is too long. I mean, if someone. Could say this, this season, build some monstrosity, something there. That's so inconveniences other users on that that line of beach huts. And that, they've got to wait two years before anything's done for it, done to it. I think it's just too long because you, we're not talking about, oh, because that's there. It's what that's doing if it's inconveniencing other beach hut owners. And um most of the people that's come to me is because things are uh inconvenience to put it politely, yeah.
Okay, I'll come back to to you, councillor Allen and Scott. Councillor Barry.
Um, again, it comes down to an interpretation of the adaptations. I mean, um, what councillor Allen's referring to. Seems to be some large scale obstructions rather than simple adaptations, which as as I see occur in Brighton C. And I think the timescale is has got to reflect the nature of the adaptation because some people have got. Concrete plinths down that would require a small bomb to get rid of. And 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 other ones have got little bits of wooden decking which might get ripped up in five minutes. So. Um, and I and I think two years is a is a bit of an arbitrary figure. Um, it may be that some people can't afford to have their adaptations removed and that they've inherited them and they've been there thirty, forty years. Um, so I think it's just a matter of, you know, individual case by case um assessment here. Rather than having a blanket two years for adaptations, as we've heard, there are some very. Big adaptations in Frinton that appear to be causing some obstruction. And yes, they would need, you know, in the public interest, it would seem that they need removing fairly quickly or or modifying. Whereas there are some very innocent, as I say, ancient adaptations in some areas. Now, why would you tell them to get rid of them when they've been there for thirty or forty years? It just doesn't make any sense to me. So. I I just think you've got to look at this, as you say, on previous occasions. On the location by location and the case by case basis, because if you put in a blanket policy. Um, it's going to cause a lot of problems for people.
So there's more suggested that they ought to go under G because that's that the whole um section that is on adaptations. Um, and also it's uh, it does say that this would be considered on a location by location basis. So that way you're running the the um two things together. So obviously your adaptations are dependent on where they are. So you'd have a different criteria for for example in Brighton C to you would in Frinton and to you would in Harwich. So I do think that the L needs to be put under um G. Um, so that we have that important link with the consideration of a location by location basis, rather than isolation on its own.
Okay, trying to put all of that together. So I think I agree with councillor Griffiths mostly. I still think we need the two year period, uh and yes, I agree with councillor Allen, it is long, but we have to be seen to be fair and just to uh the beach hut owners. But I think that two year period is our line in the sand, not residents'. And if we haven't done anything in those two years about. Things that we would like to see removed or then they're there for as long as they have to be, you know. So that kind of um touches on what councillor um Barry was saying. Because I don't think leaving it open ended would do us any favours. Um, I think we need to have a line in the sand so that some people can plead their case on a location by location. Um, and maybe we will leave some in for safety reasons, some things will be taken out for safety reasons. But yes, I think that two two years is a line in the sand. Councillor Allen, you want to come in?
Perhaps you could, if you, if we're going to go along the lines of putting it with G, is it up to a. The removal up to a period because it's location by location. Uh, it could be um up to a period of two years. So. We put in two years and you put a definite mark to say you can keep it for another two years. But we see if it's location by location, um, is up to two years, then. Or two years is a maximum.
Okay, let's do these in bits. Okay, councillor Allen's put forward that he would like to see the the phrase up to two years. Um, anybody want to second that and then we'll vote on that bit? Everybody happy with that? Okay, so up to two years.
And we put it with.
And then we're going to put that with G. Everybody happy with that? Okay, we're going to move that to G. I think that covers that. Councillor Scott, M.
Thank you, Chairman. The committee recommends that those without access or ability to use digital platforms are still able to deal with, with a member of staff. As such, sufficient resources should be in place. This come about, um, uh, one of the councillors, um, at, on the task of finish group, says, suggested or alluded that a lot of, uh, her residents who have beach huts are not necessarily online, uh, and there should be a designated, uh, contact number so they can speak to a member of staff on the phone about an issue with something, um, um, we reference the beach huts and not just necessarily digital, even though the council's aim, I understand, is to, uh, to make it more digital. Um, but obviously we must appreciate there are people that may not be. And we, and that's why the councillor suggested we put this in. Though Mr. Karen might want to say anything on that, right?
Mr. Karen, what currently happens when somebody who's got no access or ability to use digital platforms?
Thank you, Chair. So th- there is, um, we, we do have a, an officer who deals with beach huts and, and a support officer. So, uh, there is currently, um, a, a human being there on, on the end of a phone to, to speak to. Um, I think the proposal in the draft strategy is to improve the way that beach, um, um, licence holders can communicate back with, with that officer through streamlined processes and, and different forms and the var- and, and, and the likes of to improve those processes, wha- whatever they're doing, if that's, um, selling a beach hut and the likes of. Um, so that's what happens current, sorry, what happens currently is we, we have a person in principle or we do have a beach hut management system, which is very basic. The proposal is to move to a much more digitalised system go- going forward. And I think that was the basis of that recommendation from the Task and Finish Group.
Chairman, hence why the, uh, the councillor, uh, suggested that her residents are not necessarily online. And, and she was, uh, very keen for this to be in the specification.
Councillor Morrison, then councillor Allen.
I think that's absolutely fair enough. I think there are times when people do speak to somebody in person. I think it's, in fact, it's about the only thing in here. I didn't think we'd have a massive amount of discussion over, quite frankly, yeah.
Well, I, I think this is what, um, if people are in that situation, if they can't cancel, that's what your beach hut associations are for. It's, everyone should, I know, um, uh, you know, perhaps because it won't be lots of people, the odd person is, um, because why do you belong to a beach hut association if they ain't there to help you get through the mates of council? And that's why most of the, the ones that are here now, um, but I, I mean, I'd do it. Because what you all beach up people are, yeah? Oh, because you don't, you want the fee every year, but I mean, I'm pretty sure my wife's still paying a fee and we ain't got a beach hut and, um, nah, but, uh, so, um, but I don't know. I mean, use the association or use, you know, um, a family member. But again, as you say, there should be all options open. I'm not saying that that's, that's the one, but, um, I'll have to re- read the, the, um, constitution of the beach, uh, association.
Thank you.
Um, following from councillor Allen, uh, the people that came to visit us from Frinstone Wellness Associations acknowledged that not everyone is a member of the association. Some people cho- choose not to be a member of the associations. But, but the, but the councillor who was asking about making sure that the people are not part of associations that want some, um, um, correspondence with the council is not to completely be on digital, but to have means of, of, of someone on the end of the phone. That's where, that's what the alarm bells were sounding amongst the councillor. We, we were shifting all digital and, uh, and I think that's the unfair for people. Because there was one resident who was from Brighton City who, who was concerned that everything's all done online. Um, even though there were paper copies for consultation. Um, so we felt that, um, there should be at least a designated phone number, uh, there. So people who are not online, don't have access to a computer and not a member of association can still contact the council with reference to beach huts.
Kay. Um, I wasn't happy with the recommendation, um, having sp- and listened to the officer. I think we've already got what that recommendation says.
Any council built beach huts which are sold in the future are done so directly and through equitable process and not to use third parties, example, estate agents. There was some concern amongst councillors, uh, that, uh, estate agents in the, in TDC area and, and beyond were selling beach huts, um, at their places. Um, some councillors felt that we should have more control.
I'm going to go Chris Griffiths. I know what's coming though.
What's the question? What actually is an equitable process? And, and who else is in the category of, of third parties apart from estate agents?
Uh, Chairman, um, obviously the, the, the officer, that is an officer speak, not councillor speak. So I'm going to refer to, uh, Mr. Karen.
Mike, before you come in, I'm gonna let Miss Hatesons come in.
As previously stated, I wasn't part of the task and finish review, but advising members on the recommendations before you this evening and giving you my quick legal view, you couldn't enforce this recommendation. You can't prohibit somebody wanting to use, um, a third party, whether they're an estate agent or whoever from helping them be enabled. And on a call, I think the issue maybe is dialogue with those estate agents or making sure that, um, there's no misrepresentation, but you couldn't prohibit somebody from using them.
Thank you, Miss Hatesons. I was going to propose to strike that through before we have a debate on it. Any, everybody in agreement or councillor Allen?
Well, I mean, uh, as, as long as, if, if the council sell a beach hut, it should be sold to a person living here who's, who's got a property and is a taxpayer in tendering and not sold to, on the commercial market. Because, you know, we've got to have some loyalty to a local residence. Uh, that people do want these beach huts and ev- you would sell them to, well, sell them tomorrow in, in my town and where I live. Um, if they're not issued out on the open market to all comers, first preference should be for local people. And whether it's through a state agent or not, I would be weary about giving them out to estate agents and all this. Because, um, and I'll finish there. Thank you.
Councillor Griffiths.
Given the fact that we have no way of enforcing N or O, would it not be prudent to take them out? Because it does, we've already had the, um, legal advice that we can't enforce it. So as we can't enforce it, or that's at least my understanding, there's no real point in having it in there. Uh, and to be quite honest, I, I really have difficulty when, um, parts of local government are telling people they can't use estate agents if they want to. I mean, we do live in a free society and surely if you want to, um, use estate agents or anybody else and, you know, and it's legal to do so, you should be, that should be within your right to, to use the services of, of, of those type of, um, agencies. Surely it's not down to local government to dictate to people who they do business with. And in my view, I think both N and O ought to come out because frankly, I think that really is an insult and, and people should be, uh, you know, at liberty to use who they want to carry out their own business dealings.
Thank you, councillor Griffiths. Um, I'm gonna move, I'm going to move, uh, that N be struck through and we won't. I'm gonna move to O, ask for legal advice and then strike it through. So I think, uh, just checking that. Um, we're going to move on to O, but there's no need to read that out. Um, yes, there is, actually, we'll, we'll stick to the plan. It's the last one.
Thank you, Chairman. And the last one, O, subject to a legal review, is recommended that consideration be given to including a condition in future agreements that third-party estate agents are no longer able to sell beach huts on behalf of their respective owners. Um, a couple of councillors, uh, wanted some control and they felt that, um, that, um, beach huts were sold, like similar to councillor Allen, not necessarily people within the borders of tendering and, and external of the district and, uh, councillors, some councillors felt that it was unfair that local people may not have had the opportunity to purchase them.
And based on the Warrington's officers', um, legal advice, I think we can't enforce that. So I'm, I'm move, I'm, I'm going to move to strike that through. Everybody happy with that? Okay. That's the end of the recommendations by councillor Scott. I have got one of my own that I thought we would add, which has come through. Um, and that was just to review this in twelve months. Yeah, okay. Twelve, yes. So give it a full season.
So the new system are coming or that, or that's twenty-four?
So. Done your review?
Yeah.
You know, so we can see what's happened in a year. So basically. Anybody else got any other recommendations before I close the item? Well, can I just say thank you very much? I know it's been a tough couple of hours, I think, um, to councillor Scott and his supporting officer, Mr. Karen. Um, we appreciate all the work that Task and Finish Group did and I will send a personal thank you to all of the Task and Finish Group. Uh, thank you for your recommendations and your efforts, um, and on behalf of the committee. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, councillors, for, um, giving me a grilling. And, uh, I have to say after Task and Finish Group, I, I've learned more about beach huts than I would ever known. Especially for me as a rural councillor, don't have beach huts.
Right. We're just going to take a few minutes while we empty the room a bit and sort some people around. So thank you all for coming and, uh, hope to see you again. Thank you very much, everybody, let's resume the meeting. Okay, thank you everybody. So item gender number five is the task and finish group around cyber security. And for this one, I have got councillor Clifton and he's got supported by his officers councillor, councillor, Mr Higgins and Mr Barrett. Take it away.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Before I begin this evening, I'd like to start by thanking my task and finishing group council members, councillor Amos, councillor Griffiths, councillor Wiggins and councillor Cooley. I'd also like to thank the officers who have supported us all greatly through the last few months. We've had a very, very tight agenda, it's been a lot of hard work in a very short space of time. So yeah, so let's start by thanking them for being so great to work with. As I said, we've not had an awful lot of time to get this work done. When the scope was first delivered to me for this task and finishing group, I was kind of worried because cyber security covers a huge variety of subjects. Prior to our first group meeting, I met with the IT wizards here at TDC, John Higgins and his officers as well. And through that conversation, we were able to focus or come up with the document, or I was introduced to the document of the Cyber Security Assessment Framework. And I thought that would be a good point to focus our efforts from that. When we went to the first group meeting, John provided a very good presentation, giving us a general outlook of what the current cyber security situation is for ourselves. And I put it to the group that we use the Cyber Security Assessment Framework to focus our efforts. Because as I said, the whole scope of cyber security is so grand. You can talk about it forever and still not cover it all. And everyone agreed that the Cyber Security Assessment Framework was probably the way to go. In terms of the report produced before you today, that is part of the appendix, appendix item da-da-da-da-da. E, as you can see, it's quite a sizable document. It comes from the Department of Leveling Up from the government. It's being rolled out across councils up and down the country, the government itself. At the moment, there is no legal pressure on us to accept or adopt all of these what is in the Cyber Assessment Framework, however, the chances are it will come in the near future. At the current minute, essential infrastructure in the UK, power stations, water supply, all of that is currently adhering to the Cyber Assessment Framework. I know private companies who are having to work with essential infrastructure are also having to adopt this to maintain their cyber security network so that none of that can be affected. When we looked at the cyber security, when we had a quick glance through the CAF, as it is known, the Cyber Assessment Framework, there is a traffic light system, green, amber and red, to suggest how progressive your organisation is through adopting it. With the timescale we had available to us, officer availability, our own personal schedules, we decided to focus all of our efforts on the areas marked in red. And over the course of three meetings, over the course of two meetings after our initial presentation and first meeting of getting to grips with this, we worked through the CAF, going through each red box, going down the list. And from those red links, red boxes, our last meeting, we was able to come up with a list of recommendations that you will find on page 13 in your agenda this evening. It is up to you Chairman, our report itself in general is quite short. What makes it very, very fat are the appendix in there. There's a lot of information in those appendix, so I will make the assumption you would like to rinse and repeat our gender item four and work through the recommendations one at a time. Over to yourself.
Thank you for your introduction councillor Clifton. It's been a long night, as you're aware. And having looked at this and having read the report, it's clear that you've got a good grasp of the subject matter. And so I think I will go through, like, just like we did the last one. But I would say to councillors, especially if there's two of them who are on the working, but apart on the task and finish, that if we can keep questions succinct and answers just as succinct, that would be really helpful. So as before, if you want to read out the recommendation, I just want to sit there and understand what, why these came about, so.
Okay, thank you very much Chairman. Recommendation A on page 13 of your agenda reads as, as soon as is possible, the Human Resources and Council Tax Committee with appropriate officers look at the salaries being offered to the advertised positions of unfulfilled senior IT posts and including cyber security senior technical positions. This came about as we was going through the CAF. Not all of our positions in our cyber security team and our IT department are currently filled. The item in the CAF suggests that you do need a full staff on as much as possible. And we do seem to be suffering here in Tendrinh a bit of a recruitment issue. A lot of posts, there was a post vacant that had to go through three rounds, I think, of advertising and interviews before we was able to find an applicant who was acceptable. We do find it difficult to find qualified applicants who apply for these positions who are not only qualified but also experienced. So our first recommendation there is that if the resources and the council tax committee can look at the salaries we offer to see if there is any wiggle room, in which case we can bump it up a bit to try and attract better talent to our cyber security team.
And the first one to speak will be councillor Scott.
Thank you. Councillor Clifton, do you know, is this a new post or is it to replace a post or is it a new post? Because it doesn't say new post, is it, was it just someone's left and we would struggle to fill the, fill the post?
So these are new vacancies in already existing posts. However, I do understand that obviously as things move forward in the world, as times change, there may be the ability to restructure our IT department and create new posts. But essentially it is existing posts that are currently vacant.
Thank you councillor Clifton. Can I ask, an officer might need to come back on this and my response is, where are you advertising this? Is it UK wide or is it, I'd be interested to know.
I was going to say, again, we have discussed this at length, there are specialist locations where we advertise these positions. There are special government sites where people will go with the special talents will know where to look. And unless you want to come add anything else on that, John?
Thank you, just to add to that, we've also been using the resources available through the Essex County Council Department. So we're reaching, making as far reaching as possible we can.
Okay, are we all in agreement with A? Thank you very much, in that case, A is passed, if you want to go on to B.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Recommendation B, by the 31st of March 2023, a member and officer cyber security working group is to be established to periodically review the council's cyber security performance against the cyber assessment framework and/or emerging mandatory security improvements and requirements. So this comes from the very first initial meeting we had, where John gave us a presentation. And in there, the leader of another council was quoted in there, that their council had suffered a very severe cyber security attack, rendering their council useless for a period of time and costing millions of pounds to restore the problem, including national resources to help with that. The leader, I believe his quote was something along the lines of, we thought we had everything in position, we thought we were secure, the truth was we got complacent. And from that, I think going forward into the new administration, a small, we all agree that a small committee working group, however the best way is to phrase that, works with officers from our IT department, meets every two to three times a year perhaps, just to go over our progress on the cyber security assessment framework. Potentially attend training to understand a broader knowledge of cyber security and how we are defending ourselves. There was a fantastic opportunity for myself during this process. The head of Democratic Services alerted me to it, where there are cyber security conferences. I was quite happy to attend one of these to learn all sorts of cyber security aspects, all the way from presentations from Microsoft, smaller companies, that even the guest speaker at the event was the hacker who successfully got into Rockstar Games, who publish the Grand Theft Auto series of games. After talking with our IT team, however, both senior members of the IT team were unavailable on those dates of the conference and it was decided that I was probably best not going on my own. Simply because of the fact I could end up going into a seminar or a speech, which I would think, oh, that sounds really good, and it being a complete waste of time, whereas I could overlook something that is quite an important issue and not go to it. So it was sort of, if one comes up in the future, IT staff who attend these things as well should go with. And that way then, you know, we are getting the most from that visit. So it's, it's things like that which the new group would do, just to make sure that we are fully aware of what the latest threats are. And if any changes need to be made or upgraded, then we have a small committee group of members who can make those things quicker and hopefully communicate that to council quicker as well.
Councillor Barry.
Thank you councillor Clifton, I think just commend you and the working party on the quality of your report, thank you very much. But just a question on that, is there not, could you tell me what portfolio holder this group might fall under in terms of jurisdiction or ownership? Because it seems to me that if it's going to be an ongoing element of council business, then it should be, become embedded within a portfolio holder responsibility rather than a voluntary thing, perhaps for members with a specific interest, you know. I mean, if the council does change and we don't have any members who are interested in cyber security, you're going to struggle to get your, get your group together. Whereas if it's a portfolio holder responsibility, then it will have to be, you know, appropriately staffed. So is that something that you considered?
I will be completely honest with you councillor Barry, that's a very good question and we hadn't considered that. Presume, I wouldn't even know how best to go about answering that, Richard, do you think you're capable of coming on that one?
Yeah, it's councillor Googly, I mean, he has a meeting set up to cover a range of things. And I suppose this is a recommendation from this committee, how councillor Googly and how Cabinet react to that. Might be exactly that response, as in it's absorbed into an existing arrangement, but still with the effect that it's intending to have. So, so it's your recommendation how that's taken forward pragmatically, that needs that discussion with councillor Googly and Cabinet.
Thank you, what portfolio are we talking about there?
That's a corporate finance and governance.
Okay, just for clarification for me, because you couldn't remember his name, you did have conversations with the portfolio holder when you were doing the task and finish group?
At the very beginning, yes, I had conversations with the portfolio holder, yes.
Lovely. Thinking that we might just change a couple of the words on B, where it says, first line, by 31st of 23rd, a member of officer and officer, I think I was just going to remove those words and put portfolio holder, working party. So that. Are you happy with that? I think that was what your intention was anyway, but okay, in that case. Okay, what was councillor Scott?
I was quite impressed that councillor Clifton was talking about cyber conferences. And I think it's now in the age where the hackers are getting smarter and councils are doing everything they can to stop the hacks. And I, and I know that from ITV News documentary, that Hackney Council in London was severely hit. And I was wondering whether we could add attending cyber security conferences, because councillor Clifton mentioned it. It'd be a good idea to perhaps improve requirements and possibly attend security conferences.
Can I, sorry, you can come back on that, sorry, yes.
Would, would that be at the expense of the council then? I mean, because if you're going to a conference, obviously it's going to cost money. Is it going to cost the individual or was it going to cost the council?
Councillor Clifton.
So the cyber security conferences, they're on specific dates, they are predominantly the ones I've seen up London Way, but they do occur around the country. The way these things work and it was, and the officers were clear to point out to me, this is where you can go wrong at these things, is a lot of these events are corporate sponsored and they take the opportunity to tell you that, oh, there is this particular threat, but we have software that can save you for £9.99 or whatever it is. So, you know, that is how these things are sponsored, there is, there is a corporate element there. We will pay thousands of pounds to have a seminar for us to try and flog our product to tell you. And that is the kind of hole I wanted to avoid and, but that was where the experience of the IT team coming with a member, if members are willing to go, that's where that experience will come in so we can attend the right sort of things. I think when the head of Democratic Services and I were talking about possibly myself going, obviously going up there, the event itself was free to attend. But I think the council was prepared to cover transport costs on the train, I believe.
Thank you for that councillor Griffiths.
Mr Chairman, I mean personally, I would add that on the, on the bottom of A and put something like with additional training for the portfolios, portfolio holders cyber security group, because you could, you could add that on to the bottom of A and if it's required, then that is all part of the training package. And I think that way then, if, if a conference comes up where the portfolio holder thinks that the people on his working party need to go, he can make that decision in consultation with officers. And that way it's all nicely linked in with the, with A which has to do with training for members.
Okay, councillor Scott said he's happy with that, so he's removed his amendment and so we can move on to C.
Thank you very much. Item C of the recommendations, by the 31st of the 7th, 2023, the council's information retention policy be reviewed, revised and due regard to the UK Data Protection Act 2018, data minimisation, accuracy and storage limitation and applied throughout the organisation. This is another item on the cyber security assessment framework where this council currently does not have a policy as such of destroying certain types of data after or removing, deleting certain types of data after a certain date. There is rules in the Data Protection Act that you are to hold certain elements of data for certain periods of time and at that time you can no longer maintain sort of that, keep that data, it has to be destroyed. Similar, I mean, example, they used to say you're supposed to keep your page. Similar, I mean, example, they used to say you're supposed to keep your paste lips for seven years for tax issues, all that sort of thing, but it it goes on to things like, how long do you keep uh previous staff records on file? How long do you keep previous residences who have moved from the area on the file? And it basically covers all of the information and it tells you how long you are supposed to have that data for. And after that point, when you are supposed to remove it from your system, either removing yourself or having a professional company come in and remove it for you. That's what that recommendation is to fully adopt uh the uh data, the the rules of the Data Protection Act two thousand and eighteen. I believe, and I said that right, John?
Thank you for that. Councillor Scott.
Uh, thank you, councillor Clifton. Um, just uh what point does GDPR come into this? Oh, is that what it is? Uh. It'd be nice if it was in GDPR brackets.
Chairman. Obviously, since leaving the EU, um, the UK Data Protection Act, which enacted the GDPR whilst we were members of the EU, took precedence because it's UK law.
I was told, thank you.
Mrs Hastings.
I was going to say something very similar to Mr Simmons, that um we should be referring to the Data Protection Act, which is the UK law.
Thank you very much. Okay, um. I've only got one concern around this and perhaps the officers can help me with this. It's the timeline, the thirty first of the seventh twenty-three is not long away and we've got a major election in the middle of it. And I'm like, is this actually a practical deadline or is this an aspiration?
I will refer to um the IT department's judgment on this, but I think it's more of a question of identifying how much information we have on certain areas. So by that time, we should be in a position to fully adhere to the data protection act, but I'll pass it over to John.
Thank you. The council does have a policy. Uh, it's being reviewed as we speak, uh, and and the key element of the policy is is a schedule. Sorry, key key element of the policy is a schedule that refers to each service, which outlines how long they'll keep their particular data for according to relevant legislation. So it's it's the schedule that really needs reviewing by the services and then needs to be applied and adhered to. So I I think it's achievable, Mr Chairman.
Anybody got anything else? Okay, in that case, we'll leave it as it is. Agreed?
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Okay, move on to D.
Thank you, Chairman. By the thirty first of the fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, individual non generic account access technologies be costly for accessing TDC terminals in locations such as leisure centres where numerous users sharing a single terminal due to a retail environment operational need. Turkey, ten and Michael. I think most of us have been into establishments, whether they be restaurants or bars. And a lot of the time you will see the staff go up to the till and they'll swipe a card through the till and that logs them in as them on that till unit to put your bar tab in or to put your order in or to ring up your bill. You will then have numerous members of staff using that one POS, that one point of sale and they'll all have their own card which they'll all swipe individually. This is uh as from a retail perspective, it's very, very good to find people who are potentially, you know, not taking out the correct amount of change, we should say, um on occasion and you can sort of identify then where people are potentially not using the system correctly. And that's coming at it from a retail perspective, from my own personal knowledge or where we used to have it in the shops, we used to sign in with our own little codes to sign in on the same till that everyone else used. It gives that sense of individual responsibility to make sure everything is accurate. In terms of a uh cyber security aspect, um, there are, you know, across our organisation, there are a number of points of sale, number of points laptops, um, computer systems that, you know, if everyone has their own individual logging system. So if anything does go wrong, it can be traced back to that particular individual. And, you know, uh, the appropriate um responses then can be can be taken with that individual. That's what that is about, because there are a number of, I mean, I think it's particularly in our leisure centres where a number of staff will be using the same POS and or the same terminal, which we use properly. And, you know, they've all got a generic PIN code or access to that till and anyone can be using it. Essentially, I remember the public, if they can access that till, if they can access the password for it, they can get into that system as well. So this gives us um a it's it's a little thing, but it's a it's a big thing on the calf that we're not currently um following.
Okay. Councillor Barry.
I'm 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 fine with that, Jim. I just think that there's a little um uh grammar grammatical point there at the the end. Should it not be where numerous users are sharing a terminal or where numerous users share a terminal? Rather than just where numerous users share in a term. Are sharing. Yeah.
Um, just curious now. Um, where's the threat in this? If somebody would explain it to me. So individual people swipe input magnets on to what we're actually preventing here.
So as I said, from my perspective, I have a huge knowledge in retail, been in the retail sector for years. If a till is not coming up correctly, is being, you know, it's cashed up at the end of the day and it's not balancing out as it should be, you can then try and you can then begin the isolation process of finding out who is not uh using the money system properly. So there is that issue to it from a a a cash security side of things. But from a cyber security type of perspective, if there is, uh, say every laptop, the extreme example, say the majority of our laptops have a generic password to access them. Someone only needs to access one password to suddenly access every single laptop or the majority of laptops that we have. So it reduces that down to individual people and individual responsibility. It's 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 a minor. Uh, in terms of the grand scheme of things, it is a minor thing, but it is still a thing. And it's a thing in terms of the cyber security assessment framework, we need to apply, we need to adhere to. I don't know if I reuse to want to comment and say any more on that.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Um, it just increases auditability, traceability. Uh, if if uh an example of a a rogue member of staff downloading data, because, you know, these are computers with access to huge amounts of data. So it 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 adds an element of of ownership, but but traceability and auditability as opposed to a number of generic users, you know, we we could identify that it was an issue with a particular laptop uh behaving fraudulently or or downloading data that that they shouldn't be accessing. But if we've got generic user accounts, you cannot tie that down to an individual.
Thank you. Um, councillor Scott.
Yeah, I I fully support this. I think it's protecting the staff um at TDC, whether it's in the leisure centres, whether it's at the front of house here, at the theatre selling tickets. So I think it's it's crucial for this and um back in the early day when I first became a councillor, our cards used to swipe everywhere, not like the key fob we have now, we used to swipe everywhere to get in here, there and everywhere. Um, and perhaps we should perhaps use this to go on the terminal and top in a code. You link your pass to an individual code yourself instead of like a a key fob. Um, like they have in pubs where you have a key fob, you can easily lose that. Um, so I fully support this and well done for doing the work on it.
Councillor Griffiths.
Chairman, can we just clarify that the actual terminals that we're talking about, for example, in the leisure centre actually have client data on them, including names and addresses of people using gyms and swimming pools, et cetera. It's it's set up to the one card system, so when you use it, details of the membership come up.
Not directly responsible for for the one card system, but they are laptops. Uh, they don't hold data on the laptops themselves, but they are accessing databases with names, addresses, et cetera.
Right, so basically what we're saying is the reason we're bringing this in is part of the databases, residents' contact details and and basically addresses on there.
It's it is a protective measure. I I think councillor Scott put it very aptly. It's also a protection of staff measure as well if there are any accusations of wrongdoing. Because, you know, we can clearly identify that uh that councillor Gary Scott is was working on that terminal between the hours of X and Y and he had exclusive access to that.
So basically it's dual protection for both staff and residents.
Yes.
Trying to get that.
Thank you.
Okay, we happy to accept that one?
Yeah.
As written, okay. Moving on. Um, E please.
Uh, recommendation E, uh commencing no later than May two thousand and twenty-three, following the election of the new administration, cyber security and information governance training for all members after every election and for staff in their inductions with periodic refresher training for both to be made mandatory. This comes back to a a Data Protection Act thing where as councillors, some councillors have been on this council for many, many years. Um, there is a potential that councillors could be on this council for many, many years to come. They will may probably maintain the same email. And again, the Data Protection Act applies there. Once, you know, if if residents are emailing you, they are giving you their email address. They're providing you potentially with details about them, their home addresses, their contact details. Members again are uh subject to the Data Protection Act. Data like that is openly allowed to be stored for a set period of time, depending on what the data is. And obviously at that point, the data needs to be destroyed. So this is primarily a way of protecting councillors from falling potentially foul of that in the future. Um, a- again, it's a bit of a minor thing, but, you know, if if you've been a councillor for twenty, thirty years in the future, you've had the same email. There are potentially emails or information on your app, on your email address account that go back ten, fifteen, twenty years and information potentially stored in there will be in breach of the Data Protection Act and must be removed. And that is pretty much, I think, what uh that recommendation is in there for. Uh, anything else on that one, John? No, I think that one covers it.
Oh, councillor Allen, I thought we were just going to move that.
I'll move the recommendation.
Hey, well done. Thank you. We all agree?
Yes.
Um, I'm moving on to the next one, please.
Okay, uh, recommendation F, as soon as possible in consultation with the council's monitoring officer to review existing member guidance and explore member training opportunities as to what constitutes party political activities in the context of using a tendering district council email account. This uh councillor Griffiths um was very concerned about this and it is a bit of a grey area. And although it is worded in that context there, uh, there is the potential with using a tendering district council email account. A member could misuse it in some manner. Um, so essentially, in in the context of how it's read in the recommendation there, um, coming up to perdon elections, uh, a councillor could be putting out, especially sort of along the independent lines maybe, putting out uh election leaflets or a media with their tendering district council email address on there, which is not allowed. But at the same time, uh, Chris was saying that during the year they put out and during outside election time, himself uh and his uh colleague put out an awful lot of uh media leaflets, Christmas cards on there and that that they get confused about what they can and cannot put their emails on. Going forward into the far future, social media is playing another bigger part in our lives. Communication with our residents is becoming more of a thing. Um, what will using your email be appropriate for and what will it not be appropriate for? For example, is it appropriate to set up social media accounts? Social media accounts have to be linked to an email. Is it appropriate for them to be linked to a TDC email? I'm not sure. Is it appropriate to be linked? Are you allowed to start surfing the web, you know, setting up YouTube accounts with your TDC email in the impression of trying to do maybe some not so legitimate things with it? It's a teaching, I mean, a lot of members in this room now will probably thinking, look, I've got me email, I know what I'm doing with it. But this is going forward in the future, potential new members and obviously keeping on top of what keeps us as an organisation, as an individual legal in terms of their district council email address.
Thank you very much. So basically protecting councillors. Councillor Scott.
Um, can I ask, um, uh, maybe the officer can ask, um, um, have we uh consulted the LGA? Because I'm sure there's there's the political groups, the LGA, they use their uh own councillors email address to do LGA stuff apart for group, if it's Labour, Lib Dem or Conservative group. Um, I assume that is okay because it's linked to the LGA. I appreciate you can't put your councillor's email address on on political literature during political times. Um, over twenty years of being the district councillor, that was the first thing that I in my induction here. You can't use party political stuff for uh email, um, your councillor's email address. And I assume it hasn't changed since then. And I think it's right that councillor Griffiths bring it up because it shouldn't be used at all.
So we have to move that recommendation? Sorry, Miss Hastings.
That's okay. Um, I just wanted to give councillor Scott reassurance that we um often um look at the local government association's publication and material on a range of issues that we deal with within the council and the um draft pre-election guidance that we have drawn up as officers is um being considered by the standards committee and that agenda has already been published. And within that document itself, we are reflecting the most up to date guidance from the local government association. So we're on top of it.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Back to the uh recommendation, we're all happy to move it. Yeah, not in agreements. Okay. You're right with that one, Jim? Yeah, okay. Next one.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, we're up to G. Yes, uh, recommendation G. Uh, as soon as possible, the new cyber incident response plan, CRIP, included as appendix after this report, be adopted. Uh, this is part of the cyber security assessment framework. Unfortunately, we can put as many protections in our cyber security as possible. We can spend millions of pounds doing this. Unfortunately, a successful cyber attack is a question of when and not if. You've only got to look around recently, Royal Mail have been uh services have been reduced because of a cyber attack. I mentioned Rockstar Games earlier, a company who means their livelihood is the internet. They were they were successfully hacked and items of their product were linked on the internet. It is unfortunately a question, like I say, unfortunately, and we don't have the budgets, they do. They will spend a huge amount of money on protecting their product as compared to ourselves. Obviously, they present a higher target, a higher value target as such. The cyber incident response plan is what happens if this council is attacked successfully and items of our service are reduced, if not in part or in full. The cyber instant response plan, so for example, everything goes to pop here, we lose uh internet, our inter- our internal services, um, all of our services go down, the ability to collect uh in uh the council tax, the ability to pay out uh benefits. All of that system completely collapses and is completely unoperable because I can, we've been locked out of our computers. At this point, John and his team will go to the cyber incident response plan, uh, which is, like I said, appendix F in this report. And that is basically their reboot and recovery plan of how they get this council back on its feet. There is a system that is backed up, that is essentially reactivated. And this is the plan of how we start bringing various parts of this council back on.
And this is the plan of how we start bringing various parts of this council back online as and how and when the team can do it, essentially.
Thank you for that. Are we happy to? Yep. Okay, that's, oh, sorry councillor Barry, I thought you were saying yes to moving it.
Yeah, just a question on how this might apply to town and parish councils and, you know, whether there's any reference, because we come to, you know, the district council for support on a number of other issues. I mean, this seems like it's obviously a much bigger deal, as you say, for this authority because of its size. Would say a small town or parish council was a victim. Is there, this is a more generic question, not related to this report. Is there any support or anything in this plan, incident response plan, that could be used to support a local council or a local parish council?
So the instant response plan is predominantly for this council, it's this council's services. So if this council goes down, obviously, as a district council, we have a lot more vulnerable services than what a town council will do. I am kind of pleased you brought the subject up of our town and parish councils' own cybersecurity. I have had a conversation with John before about trying to do something where the parishes in Tendrining can work in some way with Tendrining to improve our own cybersecurity. John has said it's been looked at before. At the moment, the ability to do that isn't quite there. But this is potentially something the working group can look at going forward into the future and working with parish and town councils to improve their own cybersecurity systems.
Councillor Scott.
Following on from councillor Barry, if a parish council or town council was hacked along those lines, can they still get advice from TDC? Because parish town councils are like code of conduct, let's go to TDC, everything else to come to TDC elections, TDC. Why can't IT?
I will pass you over to Lisa. I mean, John is probably always open to a phone call. However, I know how much he charges per minute.
The, no disrespect to any town and parish councillors sitting on this committee, but town and parish councils are separate entities, organisations, authorities in their own right. They make decisions within their own governance framework and are responsible for their own actions within their individual councils. We do, however, work very closely with town and parish councils, but ultimately, we are not their professional advisers. So I just wanted to make that point.
If I can, chairman, just add to that.
Can I just add just one more bit to that, that obviously the reason they come to, if you say the council, they actually come to the returning officer for elections and the returning officer recharges the costs of delivering those elections. So it is that charge.
Hands all over the place. Councillor Clifton and then Mr Higgins.
I was going to say, you know, the best thing a town council can do, the cybersecurity assessment framework is a publicly available document. It is quite a substantial document, which is why it took us quite a while to get through just the essential parts of it. But for town and parish councils, if cybersecurity is a big concern, the cyber assessment framework is a very good starting place to mitigate weaknesses in your own cybersecurity. I don't know if John wants to come in anymore on that.
All I wanted to add, Mr Chair, with respect to the question about town and parish councils, is cyber incidents response plan is a best practice document. We've adopted on page sixty-two, the NIST four phases. There's absolutely no reason whatsoever why a town and parish council couldn't look at this document and adopt anything that they felt appropriate, obviously in their own right.
Are we happy with the recommendation? Okay, we're going to move on. So page I and J all relate to the same thing, so we'll take them all together.
Yes, John. So in relation to that, they are all related. I will read all three of them. I'll read all three of them out together, chairman. So recommendation H, that post-May 2023 local elections, under the new administration, that the member practised of auto forwarding of emails be ceased. And that subject, recommendation A, I, that's subject to the associated funding of eight thousand pounds being identified, that the preferred option two, appendix D, refers, provision of a standard council managed mobile smartphone, in addition to a council managed laptop, be provided to those members that want one to access emails and be contactable when mobile or, as recommendation J, as an alternative to the above recommendation I, that should, if, that should it not prove possible to fund the smartphone cost centrally, then each member requesting a standard council managed mobile smartphone will be asked to fund the cost from allowances approximately two hundred pounds per year or about sixteen pounds out of our allowances per month. This is obviously the issue of emails being forwarded from members' official TDC email accounts to their personal accounts. We were, as a task and finishing group, pretty unanimous in our decision that that practice does need to cease as soon as possible, but we've said in here under the new administration. In response to that, the biggest issue we found from listening to members is people want to access their emails whilst on the move, where a laptop may not be appropriate. Myself, as an example, as a lorry driver, I can drive four hours up the road and be stuck on the bay for five hours, as I was the other day. I could have had a handheld mobile device and just flicked through my emails for that day or the previous day and answered what I needed to, rather than taking an entire laptop. So our recommendation is that the the practice of emails being forwarded to members' personal emails, first of all, be stopped from the new administration. This conjures up in itself a whole host of problems surrounding data protection, members' personal security, and again, security to ourselves at this council. I know the term Freedom of Information Act was brought up in the last, in the full council meeting in November. Lisa may have to correct me here, but from a Freedom of Information standpoint, in councillor terms, a council member is not subject to Freedom of Information Act for receiving those emails from a TDC email account to their personal account. The problem we then have is when that member then starts sending emails regarding council business from their personal email account, and this is where we start having problems. This, funnily enough, was highlighted to us during this period of our task and finishing group doing our research, where a member of this council sent an email from their personal email account or work email account, wherever it is their emails are forwarded to, to a number of members of this council regarding organising a planning committee meeting, setting up a time and location. It was a very, very suspicious email. For example, it was sent to myself. I do not sit on planning. The female members of planning were not included, i.e. Gina Placey and Wiggins. There were four people included in there for memory who no longer work here at TDC, either in an office capacity. The timing of the meeting was wrong. And so this again highlights the dangers of emails being forwarded to our personal email accounts and then a councillor then being tempted to then reply with those emails. Or in the case of this one, the member was contacted and told that they'd sent this email to everyone. And their response was, I have no knowledge of sending this email. So straight away, our suspicions are that his email account had been hacked and the hacker was acting as the elected member, trying to secure us to entice us into a meeting at their choosing and not the district councils. So there are a number of issues. Again, we've mentioned data protection and the rest of it. I don't know, John, if you can come in with any more on that, but essentially, that is why the forwarding of members' emails should stop. And then coming back to the issue of how we rectify being able to access those emails whilst councillors are at work, mobile, up and down the country as and how. This was the only point of a sort of contention in the task and finishing group is funding the use of issued mobile phone, TDC mobile phones to members. One of our members stated that they don't really need a mobile phone, they don't really want it. They, you know, why should they have to pay for one or why should the council have to pay for something that they're not going to use? Another argument was quite funny that the majority of us agreed that the mobile phone is an essential and professional piece of equipment that allows us to contact our residents better, allows us to communicate with officers better. It also provides, funnily enough, a significant level of personal protection for members. This is going to sound really, really strange, but unfortunately, myself and my partner councillor Knowles were the victims of a scam, of fraud. And one of the issues that Fiona encountered was someone nicked her mobile number, not her phone. They were able to completely transfer her number from her phone to another SIM card. This is an issue for members because obviously, a lot of us will tend to advertise contactable information on TDC website and town council websites. This leaves us open personally as a target for people to use that information to target us more personally in the way that we were, because that information is out there, again, to a potential hacker, to a cyber threat, any sliver of information is crucial to them. So going down the route of providing a mobile phone adds an awful lot of security to ourselves. It is all on the TDC network. Everything that goes between TDC devices is encrypted. So even if you use a normal wifi network in Costa, someone monitoring that wifi network cannot see what you are sending or what you are receiving because it is all encrypted on a TDC communication network. And like I said, the biggest issue we had was trying to decide the best way to pay for this. And that's why both the options are there. We couldn't devise whether, you know, a mobile phone is a essential item of communication in, you know, in the modern world, it's pretty essential to communicate with officers, with residents. It provides that level of additional personal security for us. Or is it a convenience issue? If it's essential, the argument we made, TDC should cover the cost for it. Is it a convenience issue? In which case, the argument we made that members paid for it. So unless I really used to want to come in, that pretty much wraps those three up in a nutshell.
Thank you for that. I've got some people to come in, but before I do, I actually need to ask permission from the committee to continue the meeting because we've nearly hit three hours. So after three hours, I have to ask. So as it brings a few minutes away, we're nearly finished. Are you all okay for to continue and finish the meeting? Thank you very much. Councillor Allen.
It all sounds great. I mean, I've been, I was told I couldn't have any emails forwarded. And I haven't had none coming up to four years. But a load of the existing councillors do and still, and they are very attached to it and it happening. The idea of a mobile phone is great, but when you're using a mobile phone all day for your work, to have another one as well carrying around is just not right. If I am actually back here next time, I would probably ask if I would get a dedicated, I would say iPad, but there are other tablets available, one of the smaller iPads rather than that. Whether you're going to say it's got to be a mobile phone or just a way of retrieving and getting something like that purely for nothing else, no iTunes or whatever, just purely to get and receive. You could also get them with a SIM card that you can then, if you need to contact or speak, you can speak on them by using the wifi. So I agree with this, but I wouldn't want another phone.
Thank you. Councillor Amos.
Yeah, I mean, as I, I mean, I will just add that, as I did mention on the working party, that I do actually work full-time and it's, I don't get home till six o'clock at night most days. So it's essential that I have my iPhone for residents to contact me, officers to contact me during the daytime. And I don't get home till six o'clock at night, so it means I've got to get the laptop out, go for all my emails, you know, and it's, it may be too late by then and something that is essential will be gone. And I've missed it and like a council meeting or something. So it might be, you know, it's, I think it's part of your job and it's a work phone and only work stuff, emails and contacts should be on there. And it separates you from your personal phone, which should be for your personal use.
Councillor Scott, I will let you come in, councillor.
Yeah, I agree with councillor Amos. It's crucially important if people are working. And I know councillor Allen works, goes here, there and everywhere, and I appreciate that. A tablet might be better for councillors to read emails and so on. Back in the day, when I first became a councillor, we were offered Blackberrys here at TDC. And I would say about a third of the councillors, I believe, took up the Blackberrys. But now, time has gone on and advancement of technology, I suspect the uptake will be high. And I do support the idea of a phone. But can I ask the phone, will it have its own individual SIM card or is it just a capability link it to wifi? And then will the SIM card be able to be published on the councillor's website? Because my mobile number is not published and I was wondering if that's the case.
I think we wandered into the minutia of the recommendation. Councillor Clifton, I'll let you come in, but I do want to wrap this meeting up, so if you could be succinct, please.
Yeah, no, just to come back on councillor Scott and councillor Allen's comments about being able to use the phone as a normal phone, the phones are costed in here with a network SIM card that is the same as the rest of TDC. So it all comes under one massive business contract as such that TDC has, just with a few extra SIM cards. So I'm not too entirely sure what that includes in terms of talk time, minutes or mobile data. John can probably answer that, but the phones do come with SIM card already with a phone number. And like I said, that phone number can then be advertised on TDC's website so people can contact us easier, but it's not our personal mobile phones. So yes, it does come with all that. I don't know, John, you want to clarify times of data?
Simply put, it's pulled data across the whole council, there's loads of it. Same as texts and voice minutes, it will not be an issue.
Councillor Morrison.
I'll make this very brief. You're looking at somebody who glazes over the second you say IT. Can I just thank you? I know you will thank the committee, but for making that so simple. I understood everything you were saying there and it was so well presented. Thank you very much indeed. Thank you.
Okay, well, before we thank you, can we just get approval on H, I and J, please? Happy with that, everybody? Is that just for the record, is that unanimous?
Yeah.
Yep, it is. Okay. In that case, have we got any other recommendations that we wanted?
They're talking about how the costing goes for this, and it says at the back that a smartphone will be asked to fund the cost from the allowances, two hundred pound per annum. So that's what's going to happen. They're going to deduct two hundred pound from all the allowances.
Yeah.
So recommendations I and J sort of follow on from one another into one sort of recommendation. So recommendations I and J sort of follow on from what I'm having to one sort of recommendation as such. The idea is, is that initially the council will try and identify eight thousand pounds in the budget to be able to supply every councillor with a mobile phone, the same as our laptops are free of charge. Obviously, budgets are tight. We're all aware of what the issues are with budgets at the minute. And the idea thinking is that if the eight thousand pounds cannot then be found, it will then be down to councillors individually who will want a mobile phone, will have the option of having a TDC issued mobile phone at the cost of two hundred pounds a year deducted from their allowances or about sixteen pounds a month, which I think you worked there councillor Griffiths, was something like that.
Chairman, if I come back, no, I've got no problem with it. I think, you know, if you supply mobile phones, the councillor should pay for them.
So the question was, any more recommendations that we wanted to add that weren't already on there? Okay, in that case, all that's left to me is to thank councillor Clifton and his task and finish group, his supporting officers for what is and has already been claimed to be an excellent report. There's many, many things here, a lot of work. And I look forward to seeing perhaps a cybersecurity working group in action and see what that brings us. Thank you very much.